Good morning. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. Before I continue with my remarks, I'd just like to make a few introductions. First, our panel, on my far left, Mr. Dominic Gully; on my immediate left, Ms. Laura Alderson; on my near right, Mr. Rick Ross; and on my far right, Ms. Sophia Ruddock. At the left end of the desk is our Deputy Secretary of Treasury, Ms. Barbara Bartosik; and in front of me is Barbara's and our support staff. And my name's Dawn Taylor, and I'll be chairing this morning's meeting. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge that the land we're meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid, in-person, and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use Share Screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Body, T-Lab, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Body or, in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amending the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Our hearing procedure is that I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. However, we will move any requests for deferral by the applicant upfront so that they can be dispensed with quickly. Making submissions. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair, should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentations or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application, if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. But before we hear our first item this morning, we need confirmation of the minutes of the last meeting, which was held on May twenty-ninth. So may I have a motion to adopt those minutes?
I can make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson, and second her. Thank you, Mr. Ross. All in favor? Okay, the minutes of the meeting held on May twenty-ninth are adopted. I would ask firstly, panel, do any of you have any declarations of interest for items in the, on the agenda today? Mr. Gully?
Chair, I have an interest with, sorry. Chair, I have an interest, a conflict with respect to three forty, three thirty Mill Road, item number seven. I have an interest with respect to a property in vicinity of the notification area, so I'm declaring a conflict on that.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Gully. And staff, do any of you have any conflicts to declare? No? Okay. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, do we have any requests for deferral on the agenda today?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the ones that I'm aware of are two, eight, and nine.
Two, eight, and nine. And Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, do we have any files to close today?
None today, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then, let's begin with the requests by the applicant for deferral, beginning with number two, six-six-six Trethuie Drive.
Mr. Chair, the agent for item six, or item two, is not on the call. We've sent him an email, but he's not online.
It seems that's a habit of his. They didn't post the sign, so it has to be deferred.
So it's automatic?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, then, let's, let's deal with that. I'm just pulling the agenda up here. Okay, so this sounds like it's an automatic deferral, so we don't really need to hear any rationale for it. Do we have a motion to defer?
Since I have my microphone on, I'll make that motion for deferral. It's an automatic deferral because of, there's a notice issue.
Okay, is there a second here for Ms. Alderson? Ms. Ruddock, thank you. All in favor?
Correction, it's not a notice issue, it's a photo issue. The issue, the issue is that the photo was not posted.
Yes.
No, no, the sign.
The sign, yes.
Okay, I don't think, does that change your desire to second? There you go. Does it change anybody's decision? Are we all in favor? Okay, item two is deferred. Moving now to item eight, one forty, Fourth Street. The agent is... Sham Said is the agent. Is he available virtually, Adam?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, the, the agent for item eight is Ryan Dunlop.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at item four.
It's one forty-fourth street.
Ryan Dunlop, yeah. One, it's, it is one forty-fourth street. So is Mr. Dunlop available?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. Could you just give us your name again and your address, and tell us why you'd like to defer today?
Yeah, Ryan Dunlop, six hundred Fleet Street in Toronto. The reason for deferral today is we just need some extra time to address the transportation comments that, that we got back. So we just need to go back and get that coordinated, and then we'll be back.
Okay, yeah, well, I noticed they requested three conditions of approval, so you need to sort out what they mean to you, I suppose.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so panel, we have a request to defer, to enable.
Sorry, I'll move to defer this matter as requested by the applicant to allow them to adjust the transportation conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Ruddock. Is there a second here for Mr. Ross? Thank you. All in favor? Okay, item eight has been deferred.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlop. Item nine, fifty, Aldgate Avenue. The agent is Tomas Gurrell.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair and committee members.
Afternoon.
Or morning.
Morning, 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 yeah.
Sorry.
So you just repeat your name and give us your address, and tell us why you'd like to defer this one today.
My name is Tomas Gurrell, and I'm deferring fifty Aldgate due to city planning had a couple of comments in regards to height and size because we lifted the house. We didn't want underpin, lifted it, so we're just gonna make some adjustments and come back.
Okay. Panel, a motion to defer? Mr. Ross? Can you just repeat that?
I, I move to approve to give the applicant an opportunity to make some changes.
Okay, and is there a second here?
I can second that much.
Ms. Alderson, thank you. All in favor? Okay, item nine is deferred. Now we can go back to the beginning of the agenda. Starting with item one. Two-twenty-six Torrey Arc Drive. Just, this is a revised application. The purpose is to construct a one-story addition along the east side of the existing building. There are two variances. We have no agency comments or conditions. Does anyone on the panel request a presentation, or should we ask the agent if he would be agreeable to foregoing that? Presentation? Yes, no? Nope, okay. So, Sal Creamy?
Good morning through you, Mr. Chair and committee members.
Yeah, if you're agreeable that we, the panel finds this application pretty clear and straightforward, would you be agreeable to foregoing a presentation? And Lou answering any questions, if we have any?
Of course, just one quick note that we did work with community planning on the revision, why it is a revised application. We made the east side lot line setback better, and planning is agreeable and supportable of the application, and I'll leave it in your trustworthy hands, Mr. Chair.
Okay, good. So, panel, any questions, comments?
If no one has any, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please do.
It's a very straightforward application. It is revised, and I move for approval with no conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson.
Second?
Second here, Mr. Gully, thank you. All in favor? That is approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Creamy.
Thank you.
Moving on to item three, five thirty-seven... Sorry, forty-one Treeview Drive. The agent is Eddie Perez. This is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There's one variance. Again, I would suggest perhaps this is very clear and straightforward. We don't need a presentation. Have you been okay with that? Okay, Mr. Perez?
Hello, good morning, Chairman and committee members. My name's Eddie Perez. I'm at five thirty-seven Rogers Road. And as you can see, it's a very minor nature. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Perez. So, panel, any questions or comments? Okay, we're ready for a motion then.
I'll move to, I accept this application. Find it to be minor nature and consists of the four tests. And I, condition number two forestry, I think, is what they exist.
Thank you, Ms. Ruddock. Second here for Ms. Ruddock?
I can second that much.
Ms. Alderson, thank you. All in favor? Again, unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Thank you. Have a nice day.
You too.
Moving on to item four, sixty-two Seventh Street. The agent is Sham Said. We have urban forestry, condition three. I'll just read a quick summary here. Purpose is to construct a new duplex with an attached garage. There are four conditions. Maybe, maybe we will have a bit of a presentation here. Some of these variances are, I would say, significant. I think we need some justification from the agent on, on those. So, Mr., Mr. Said?
Mr. Chair, we also have a neighbor in Chambers.
Okay.
Yeah, who wishes to speak, sorry.
So we'll hear from Mr. Said first, if we could.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. This is Sham Said, six Ripon Street, Mississauga. I'm the authorized agent on behalf of the property owners. Thank you for this opportunity. The application that, that is before the committee today is something that was bought a couple of years ago. So initially, this application was for a, a major home renovation. However, during the construction process last year, the main walls were demolished due to issues, which triggered us to go for a new house permit. Now, under the new house permit, the way the application was regulated in the city was, it's a duplex. Now, previously, the application was for a single-family dwelling with an additional dwelling unit. Now, the application in the city is for a duplex. So, in terms of technicalities, the, it is being treated as a duplex, but in terms of serviceability, again, it's gonna be two, two, two units on the property. Now, since it is being treated as a duplex in today's time, you do see that there are variances required, where the first variance is for the lot area of, and zoning bylaw requires minimum area of five hundred and fifty-five square meters, whereas the existing lot area is of two hundred and ninety-point-three square meters. Similarly, variance number two is again for the duplex, which requires a frontage of fifteen meters, and the existing lot is configured for, as seven-point-sixteenths meters in frontage. The third one is, is, is a little lindy one, but to just sum it up, it's, it's the averaging front yard setback. Now, the average front yard setback, as per the existing condition of the property, is only three-point-nine-nine meters, whereas the zoning bylaw requires four-point-seven-eight. Now, the final, the final one is front yard landscaping, which requires seventy-five percent of the required front space for duplexes, semi-detached houses, which is nine-point-three-five square meters, but the existing is again three-point-nine-two meters. Now, in, in, in terms of the variances, they look significant, but the use of the property is, again, it's just gonna be two units, which we feel is not very significant and would still meet the four tests of the Planning Act. But if there are any further questions that the committee would like to ask, I'd be glad to answer, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Said. Panel, any questions or comments? Nope. Okay, then, let's invite... You, ma'am, if you could just give us your name and address before you address the panel, that'd be great. Think so. Sounds good.
Thank you. My name's Bianca Zorzi, and my family and I live at sixty-four Seventh Street. And this is regarding the application for sixty-two Seventh Street's new build. We bought the home three years ago. We went through the process the last time sixty-two Seventh Street was applying for zoning bylaw variances. Of course, we have concerns with a few of the plans and worry about how this addition will affect the light in our backyard and garden, our home's value, and our quality of life. The proposed twenty-five-foot wall extending halfway into our backyard with a seven-foot deck on the back, plus the stairs, will essentially be imposing and overlooking our yard, so privacy is a concern. Last year, there was a zoning bylaw section in their application for the addition on the back as well pertaining to the proximity to our shared property line. In the plans on the recent application, they indicate they intend to maintain the original building, which is now gone, at the zero-point-three-meter setback, as opposed to the required one-point-two-meter setback for the seventeen-meter addition. This application seems to be missing that section entirely. We would appreciate confirmation on that point. For perspective, our homes are thirty inches apart, foundation to foundation. The dump, the demolition of the building was abandoned in questionable, questionable condition last September with single two-by-fours on angles screwed into place to support the entire perimeter of the foundation over the winter. Needless to say, we worry about the structural integrity of these braces and how it will affect our hundred-year-old home foundation, which has had no issues to date. Our home also has a rear addition, and it did comply with the one-point-two-meter setback, allowing room for home maintenance between properties, access to the hose bib, and proper drainage. We just wonder how the addition will be constructed at that distance without building scaffolding directly in our garden, on our property, or be maintained on that side without access to our property. We have a, you know, beloved perennial garden and vegetables on the south side of our backyard that will likely not survive without sufficient sunlight after the build. In the proposed plan for this site, there are also three existing windows and a side door that are referenced as being grandfathered in and simply being moved, as this application is after the fact, and they have already demolished the home to a greater degree than originally planned. I'm concerned that the plan misrepresents the state of a renovation project turned new build. Also, moving the side door would be a proposed new opening requiring proper setback and guidelines for access. The side entrance to the presumed basement tenants' unit, again, has minimal clearance at just thirty-six inches from the neighboring south property. In addition, one of the north windows appears to be planned directly across from our south living room window, which is not code. We did not, we, sorry, we did consult with an architect regarding these plans, and another large concern is drainage. As the flat roof will be accumulating a lot of water and heavy rains, any overflow from the eaves trough will be spilling directly onto our property if the building maintains the tight zero-point-three-meter setback. That could be a concern. For the tree protection survey, just to note that the supporting documents for this survey were done on February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. It should be noted that there is no longer a mature tree in the center of the yard at sixty-two Seventh Street. It's not been there since we moved in in July twenty-twenty-two. We, however, do have a twenty-one-centimeter diameter tree, twelve feet high, that will be very sad to see killed in the construction process. It's planted beside the fence on our south side, placing it at zero-point-four meters from the proposed wall, which, again, is not noted on, as a section by law variance at zero-point-three from the property line at this point, as opposed to the one-point-two meters required. According to the tree protection guidelines on toronto.ca for private trees, a ten-to-twenty-nine-centimeter diameter tree requires a one-point-eight-meter distance of protection. So we trust these concerns could be addressed.
Okay, thank you. Just to, just bear with us for a moment. Panel, any questions or comments?
Chair, I had some comments. First of all, I want to thank you very much for your thorough presentation. I know that the agent will address the issue that you raised. Some relate to sideyard variance, some relate to the length and the depth of the building. I just wanted to make you aware the fact that those are variances, or those are issues that are not requested in the application for variance. So I just want to alert you to that. I think the comments you've made perhaps are very valid, because you're the neighbor. I was wondering whether or not you had the opportunity to speak to your neighbors or their agent.
We've, we've never had contact with them. There was a tenant living there previously, before they demolished, but we've never had the owner come visit or explain anything to us. We've reached out before, but haven't heard back.
Okay, so the agent will answer some of your questions with respect, as I said, to the length, the depth, the sideyard, and issues with respect to that. And also forestry will comment on that, say they have a requirement.
Yeah, I just feel like there's certain sections that should be in there that aren't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll invite Mr. Said back, unless, panel, any other questions for the speaker? Comments? Okay, if he can take a seat for a moment, I'm gonna ask Mr. Said to give him an opportunity to rebut the issues that have been raised. Mr. Said?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So through you, Mr. Chair, I understand the concerns raised by the neighbor. Now, predominantly, what I've heard and understood from the, the, from the neighbor is that she was more concerned about the sideyard setback and the depth of the building and the rear yard setback, and how the property is eating up probably into her natural sunlight is her concerns. To make it very clear that we are not seeking any variances related to the sideyard setback or the rear yard setback. Predominantly, the variances is for the front yard setback, the front yard landscaping, the, the lot frontage, and the lot area of the property. So, and in terms of the new lateral design, obviously, any sort of drainage issues will be addressed throughout the permit process. And any sort of cutters will be directed towards sixty-two Seventh Street, the property in concern, and nothing would go on to the neighbor's side. So previously too, we had, a, a, a couple of years ago, when we went for the home addition, there were the same concerns raised. And we did, addressed them in a similar manner last time around as well, where we did mention that there's no variances being required for the side yard setback or the rear yard setback. So, and in terms of, since we don't, we don't need any variances for this, so I feel that, you know, those concerns by, by the neighbor are already addressed by the zoning process, which doesn't require us to obtain any variances for her concerns. I hope that answers this question. Any other question, I'll be glad to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Said. Panel, any questions or comments for the agent?
Yes, the neighbor actually did ask about the, about the door, the side door, and I'm just wondering if you have any comments about that.
Through you, Mr. Chair, in terms of the side door. So, since the setback to the property is less than one-point-two meters, we are not allowed to have any additional openings that, that are already there. We can just relocate them. So in terms of that, we'd be just maintaining the openings for windows and doors without any... uh, any, uh, addition. And if there's any addition to windows and stuff, it'll be fire-rated with, uh, fire shutters, but we're not, uh, uh, too concerned adding more. So that's an existing door, uh, and we'd be just relocating to a position to suit the new proposed structure.
Okay, and one more thing. Um, the, there is a front yard setback that's required, and I'm just wondering, what, is that an existing condition? It looks to me, when I'm looking at, uh, street view, that the house is actually set further forward than the neighbor's home. Is that correct?
So if, one second, let me just reconfirm that. Yes, so in, in, in comparison to sixty-four Seventh Street, sixty-two Seventh Street is further setback towards the front, so it, it has a shorter setback, uh, in the front yard.
Right.
In comparison to sixty-four Seventh Street. Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, panel?
Uh, Chair, yeah, I, I just wanted to ask, uh, the agent if, uh, he could just elaborate, uh, on variance number three and four, because the, the neighbor did take the time to come and speak to us and, uh, raise some issues. Uh, perhaps you could provide us with a justification for, uh, the need for three and the need for four. I understand one and two are rational. I just wanted your rationalization of three and four, the front yard setback and also the landscaping, uh, vis-à-vis what's on either side of this property and on, uh, the street itself, uh, that is, uh, on Seventh Street. How does it relate and how does it match, uh, the urban fabric, uh, along the street?
So through you, Mr. Chair.
Cut to the chase. Sorry, sorry to, sorry to interrupt. Cut to the chase. Justification for variances number three and four.
Understood. Thank you very much. So in terms of the justification for the two, uh, the two, uh, variances, number three and four, now, the front yard setback, again, so we are maintaining what it is, uh, what it was, uh, from our previous variance hearing, which is maintaining the existing front yard setback without doing any, uh, further, uh, encroachment into the front yard. So we aren't planning to add more to what is, what was there, um, existing on the property. And in terms of soft landscaping, there's an existing driveway. So now the zoning by law says you're, you'd require seventy-five percent of the front yard to be soft scape, but with the existing condition of the building, that is, uh, not actually entirely possible. So even after the property line, there's a significant city boulevard, which will still maintain, uh, good enough soft landscaping area in terms for proper water drainage and other, uh, 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 drainage and soft landscaping, uh, requirements. I know it is, it's not within the property, but if you do see the site plan that was, uh, prepared by us, you can see that there's hardly, uh, there's hardly a zero-point-eight-one meter setback after the steps. So there isn't enough space to provide the required soft landscaping on this property. So it's primarily on the city boulevard side where there is significant soft landscaping, and then there's an existing driveway which is being maintained. So unfortunately, like, we, 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 we are out of options to add more soft landscaping to what the property already has.
Okay, so you are aware that you will provide thirty-one-point-four percent of soft landscaping on your property. That thirty-one percent is on your property, and none of the city road allowance, uh, green spaces is included in that. You are aware of that, right?
Correct. That is the case.
Anything else?
I actually have, just looking at the, um, street view again, is this a slight reverse slope driveway?
Yeah, it looks like.
It looks to me like it's a slight reverse slope driveway, and I'm just wondering too, since we're talking about soft landscaping, if there's any opportunity to use permeable pavers on, on that driveway.
That, that, that would be the case. So yes, it is a reverse slope driveway, and that can be undermined through the, uh, grading plan or the survey, topographical survey that is present. So it is a reverse slope driveway, and if this is a condition that the committee would like to, to this application, we do not mind having permeable pavers for the driveway.
I think it would behoove you actually to have them, because I'm worried about, you know, drainage going into the, uh, into the garage. So I think it's actually would be a, a good thing to add if, if the committee agrees to that.
And it wouldn't affect the requirement for soft landscaping, because as we know, they don't count as.
No, but it would, it would help the situation.
Yep.
So I have a, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
For the, uh, the agent, the applicant. Um, you, you made the point that because of, uh, the size of the situation, uh, you are kind of limited with what soft landscaping you got, but isn't that just putting in a different way of saying the lot maybe isn't big enough for what you're trying to do?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So what we're trying to do is similar to what we had done before when we came to the committee, is to maintain the existing la, uh, existing lot size and just add another unit, which was an ADU. The only difference from a couple of years back and today is that the main walls were demolished due to which this is being treated as a, a new house, new build. And that, that's the only reason we're here before the committee again, because of the demolition of the main walls. And yes, the lot is, it, 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 it looks small in terms of when you're looking at the zoning reg, regulations, but it is pretty much in, uh, in character with the neighborhood.
Are you suggesting that other houses in the neighborhood, uh, have the same kind of deficiency in terms of soft, soft landscaping?
I cannot be certain, but they are pretty similar. So if you do see, um, the other, uh, other properties, uh, which, which do have a driveway, uh, to, to a garage on their property, then they would still have the same deficiencies. But in terms of our property, it's primarily because there are a lot of properties we don't, don't have a driveway to a garage, so, uh, it's, it's just specific to this property where there is a driveway to a garage, and then that, which is why soft landscaping is deficient in the case.
Anything else, panel? So, uh, let's go into committee, uh, for discussion if needed or a decision.
Sure, I just, I just have a couple of comments. Um, of course, I want that, uh, thirty-one-point-four percent of soft landscaping, no question about it. Um, I don't know whether it might be too onerous, and this is just a discussion for our panel, whether it would be too onerous to insist that, uh, the pavers, uh, be used in the driveway, uh, in the sense that, uh, if you're familiar with Seventh Street, um, it would be nice to do it, uh, whether to give them that, uh, extra cost. I don't know whether, um, I would go that step, um, as long as that thirty-one percent of soft landscape, landscaping is provided. I know it's a difficult application for the neighbor, but with respect to item one and item two, um, that's almost a, a variance that's very justified in, in this time and age and the actions that council has taken, uh, to in, increase, uh, residential housing units in the city. Uh, with respect to the length, there's nothing that we can do with that, because there's no length and depth, but, uh, uh, front yard setback, again, justifiable, is pretty much similar and coherent what's on, on the street itself. So, um, it's a difficult application for the panel to deal with, uh, especially since, uh, the neighbors are newcomers to the area, and they have some valid concerns, but it's the urban fabric that's there. They're trying to mimic what's there today. Um, that's just a general comment that I wanted to make to the panel, um, particularly with respect to the pavers. I think if, uh, the agent is prepared, uh, to do that, um, that would be great. I don't know whether or not we can make it a condition.
I think my concern is that it is a reverse slope driveway, and I think it would, it's not just a, a nice-to-have thing. I think it's important to, actually, the integrity of the drainage to have permeable pavers, so it's not running back into the garage. So I, I don't think that's, it may be a little onerous in terms of cost, but I think in the long run, I think the owner will be happy with that, and the neighbor will be happier with that, I'm sure, too, as well. So I, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion if no one else has any comments.
Okay, just before you do, I just want, uh, Ms. Bartosik, are we, would, is the city set up to clear a condition for permeable pavers if it were imposed?
Not if there isn't a division that's requested it.
Sorry, I didn't quite catch the end of that. Not if.
So if there isn't a recommended condition from a specific division, there will be nobody who can sign off on that condition.
Okay, thank you. Just, just something to consider, I guess, in formulating a motion.
Sure, I, I don't want to belabor the point. Um, I wonder if I can ask the agent a question then? May I ask the agent a question?
Uh, sure. Let's step out of committee for a, a moment while you address the, the agent.
Mr. Agent, um, do you think that you'll be able to, um, convince your client to do the pavers?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So pavers is something, if it is imposed by the committee, the client wouldn't, uh, back off from doing, to meet the right, to meet the requirements of the committee and also to appease the neighbors as well, to help, uh, with the drainage issues. But that would be the case if it's a, if it's a condition imposed. Now, in terms of, if it's not a condition imposed by the committee, uh, you know, people always love saving money, so I'm not too sure if it's not a condition that the homeowner would want to add, add pavers.
So just a further question on that, did you discuss the reverse driveway with, uh, development engineering?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair, so this, this, this application is, was previously also approved through committee and have building permits and construction was going on with the same existing reverse slope driveway, and we haven't had any sort of, uh, uh, comments from, uh, from, uh, from, uh, engineering, and if there are any during this permit process, it will be addressed as required.
So during the building permit stage, when you go for a building permit, um, if, uh, someone raises the point that water may go into the property, uh, some conditions may be applied by, um, the building engineer?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, if there is any concerns raised by engineering, saying that there, there's a possibility of water coming into the garage, then we would have to, uh, make alternate, uh, the, design options where we can limit that from entering the garage. And it'll be addressed.
Thank you.
Okay, there, you good? So let's go back in the committee then. Is the, is our discussion period over? So we're ready for a motion.
Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. Um, I believe the variances that are being requested are indeed minor, um, and appropriate for the development of the site, uh, and the urban context in which it is being proposed. I know that, uh, it's, the variances do indeed look numerically very large, but when you consider what's being requested here in this part of the, the, the street, in this part of the city, um, to me, it does meet the four tests. So I'm going to move approval, uh, of, of the four variances that are being requested with urban forestry condition, uh, number? Three.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a second for Mr. Gully's motion? There is no second. The motion fails, so I'll invite another motion.
So I will, uh, move to refuse the application, um, on the grounds that, given all the discussion we've had about variances three and four, they really are not minor. And it doesn't meet the four tests.
Is there a second for Mr. Ross's motion? Ms. Ruddock? Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded to refuse. All in favor? Opposed? So the motion to refuse carries by vote of three to two.
Sorry, who seconded the motion? Thank you.
Ms. Ruddock.
Okay, thank you to all that participated in that lively item. Moving on to item five.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, before we move on to item five, I have a new participant for item five, and I just wanted to check in which capacity they're speaking, if that's okay, before we... So I have Tom Jankos. Tom?
Hi, how are you?
Hi, good, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
I just wanted to confirm in which capacity you're speaking to the application, like, are you speaking as a neighbor?
I'm a neighbor who lives just down the street from you.
Sure. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to confirm.
Thank you.
And your, what's your address, sorry, now that I have?
One oh-two Kingsway Crescent.
Okay, awesome, I'm gonna put you back on mute and then unmute you when it's your turn. Thank you.
And Adam, we still have, uh, Q Jan Kate Tang participating virtually.
Yeah, yeah, and we also have Lynn, uh, Whitner and Tom Jankos. I think they're both in person. Yes.
Okay.
Tom's virtual, sorry. Lynn is in person.
Okay, um, twenty-three Government Road, the purpose is to construct a new two-story rear addition. The existing two-story rear addition will be demolished. There are four variances. We have registered speakers, as we've just determined. We have a community planning condition. This is a revised app, this is a revised application, and we have, uh, urban forestry initially requesting deferral and then providing as an alternate, uh, their condition two with respect to a private tree. And as the agent, we have Mr. Eagleman. Mr. Eagleman?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, committee members and staff. David Eagleman, eighty-seven Skyway Avenue, Suite two hundred, Design Plan Services, Inc., Associate and Registered Professional Planner. Um, through you, Mr. Chair, I, I guess, uh, I wasn't aware, but I guess because there are some registered speakers with the committee, like, uh, presentation. Okay, so, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I have, uh, submitted a detailed justification letter, which I hope the committee had time to review. The existing detached dwelling is currently a listed heritage structure. We are proposing a two-story rear addition, but a large portion of that rear addition is only a portion of the width of the house and is also only one story. Um, so specifically in regards to the length and depth variance, which I think numerically are the, uh, variances that stand out, stand out the most in this application, the, the addition is, uh, with the addition excluding the one-story portion, we are compliant within less than both the maximum permitted length and depth. So it is only that one-story portion that is triggering the length and depth variances. And in addition to that, a large reason for the length and depth is because we are maintaining the existing listed heritage building almost in its entirety, and the addition is going to be entirely to the rear of that. Um, the, we worked with heritage staff, even though it's not a designated heritage dwelling yet, we did work with heritage staff, and we did make, uh, some slight revisions to their satisfaction. They are satisfied with the proposal as per their submitted report. We also discussed this with community planning staff. They are in, uh, in support as well and have no concerns. And we did obtain eight signatures in support of the proposal. They were just submitted, uh, yesterday, so they were submitted late, but they were submitted and are on the public record and are from neighbors both on Government Road and, uh, other neighbors throughout the, the neighborhood. So, I, and just briefly in regards to the length and depth as well, I- And just briefly in regards to the length and depth as well, I spoke to this in my justification letter, but the houses on, on the south side of Government Road in the same block as the subject property and the lots are in a staggered pattern, so you'll see I provided a picture of 21B Government Road, which is the neighbor to the east. That dwelling is almost entirely to the rear of the existing dwelling. And in addition to that, there is an existing detached garage and the one-story addition that is triggering the length, the one-story portion of the rear addition that is triggering the length and depth variances is where the existing garage is. And then, just lastly, in regards to forestry's memo, frankly, I'm surprised by it. I, I don't understand their deferral recommendation. We submitted an arborist report and a tree protection plan prepared by a certified arborist. So I'm not sure what additional information they're looking for. We provided the standard materials with every committee of adjustment application. And the tree that they're, they have concerns with, we're proposing only to injure, we're not proposing to remove it. We actually, the arborist did exploratory excavation so that the arborist could provide some considerations for the design. And the addition was specifically designed to limit impacts to that large tree that's to the rear of the existing garage. So the, the one-story portion of the addition is being built on helical piles to limit the amount of excavation that's required for the portion of the addition that's near that tree that urban forestry has concerns with. So frankly, I, I don't know why they are recommending deferral. And, you know, in regards to the, the other variances, I, I provide a detailed justification in my cover letter or my justification letter, the FSI is in keeping with the neighborhood and very much in line with other approvals, provided examples in my letter. And the coverage is a very minor increase itself, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Eagleman, panel, any questions or comments for Mr. Eagleman?
Just perhaps some certainly, can, can you refresh my memory, is it a public tree or a, a private property?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, it is a private tree, it's just, it is a, a large, I believe it's a black walnut tree, just a large black walnut tree to the rear of the existing garage.
Thank you.
On the subject property, it's sort of near the property line to the neighbor to the west.
That's an expensive tree, black walnut. So I do have a question, forestry memo that we have is asking for deferral. Do they know about the mitigation efforts that you're undertaking?
Through you, Mr. Chair, and I'll just qualify my comments, I, I made them, those were the comments made by the arborist in the arborist report, I'm not a qualified arborist. We submitted the arborist report with the application, so I.
So they're, they're well aware of the mitigation efforts that your client is taking?
I would think so, their memorandum makes it seem like they're not, but they have the arborist support, it was submitted with the application.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, panel? Okay, now we'll hear from some interested parties. Firstly, we'll deal with the people in the, in the hearing room, and sir, I believe you're in that category. If you just give us your name and address, please, to start.
I'm Lynn Whitmer, and my family and I live at 25 Government Road, which is immediately to the west of the property. And our concerns largely are about the big black walnut tree that you've just been talking about. Because it's the, on the property line between our property and, and 23 Government. And this tree has a diameter at breast height of 1.05 meters. And what that means is, with a tree of that size, the tree protection zone should be 6.3 meters in diameter. And the new addition is proposed to be built right there within, inside the tree protection zone. And the part of the new addition that's going to be there has a washroom and a storage room, both of which are only accessible from the outside. So it, if you've got that, it's a washroom, but the only way to get to the washroom is from the outdoors. No access from the interior of the house. So I, I think those two buildings, the washroom and the storage room probably are to accommodate the pool, which is being proposed for the backyard as well. And the pool, while it will go on the east side of the property, the, the huge walnut tree that's there, and this walnut tree is approximately 75 feet high and it's approximately 70 years old, so it's very large. The, the pool will also be in where the feeder roots are of the tree. And the only reason that this has come up as a variance is due to the size of the new proposed house. And if you look at the variance on the length of the house, they're not minor variances, they're large variances, it's much longer than would be allowed normally. And, and I do understand because it's listed as a heritage house, if, they can't do a lot, a lot of changes to the front, so they're forced to build longer rather than build wider up front because of the heritage status. But our concern about the tree is, it seems like it's being impacted and they did admit that it would be injured. And, and we will not agree to allowing it to be injured. It seems that it could be redesigned and with these rooms not, these rooms that are kind of just going to be used maybe four months of the year or something. Not needing to be where they are, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and also, because there's a pool nearby, I'm, I'm sure the neighbors will want to do some pruning of the walnut tree to stop walnuts from falling in the pool or whatever. So, you know, additional pruning as well as damage to the roots can significantly impact the tree. So that's why we're, our, our concern is just with the size of the prop, of the new build.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Pat, is there a few before you go, panel, any questions or comments for the gentleman? No, okay, that's fine.
Are you saying that the, they will not be able to have a proper-sized TPZ?
They, they can't, they're building inside the tree protection zone. In fact, it's supposed to be a 6.3 meter diameter tree protection zone. The design shows the new house will be 2.2 meters from the tree. So it's well inside, they're building well inside the tree protection zone.
That's what I thought you're, you're pointing at. You know about those, those walnuts, when they come down?
I'm well aware of them, yes.
And they don't come down every year?
There's more in some years than other years, that's correct.
I, I, I live with a black walnut beside my backyard, so I, I do know something about black, black walnuts.
Well, that, that was our concern, too, once the new neighbors know what walnuts are like, they may want to come in and prune, do more pruning or something, which would be injurious to the tree.
Now, what was mentioned, that the tree is on the property line?
Yes, it is.
An actual border tree?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay, moving along now. Okay, sir, take your seat, thank you very much. And Adam, I have the one, is no one else in the hearing room here to speak to 23 Government Road? No, okay. So I have Q Jan Kate Tang on my list, and you mentioned someone else.
Yeah, Tom Jankos.
Okay, why don't we deal with the registered one here first?
Sounds good.
Q Jan Kate Tang, 27 Government Road.
Kate, you've been unmuted, you can go ahead.
Oh, I, I, I don't have any comments, I'm just subserving right now.
Okay.
Okay, invite the other gentleman back then, Ron.
All right, Tom, you have been muted.
Can everyone here, good morning, committee members, and thank you for making time for me to chat on this application. I live at 102 Kingsway Crescent and I, I became interested in this application because I've always been interested in this home that's a bit of a heritage home in our neighborhood, and a beautiful home. And it went up for sale and I was curious to what would happen. Typically, you'd see someone rush and move to demolish that home. And so I saw the application and I made some calls and I spoke to the, to the new owners and just asked them questions about what they're doing. My concern was they're going to demolish it. And they walked me through what I think are incredibly thoughtful plans. And I think there's very few people, and I don't have any relationship with them, just to, to put that out there as well. Again, I was just curious on the, on the, what was happening. But I think there's very few people who would tackle the renovation and restoration of a heritage home in a neighborhood. Most people would rush and try to get that thing demolished as quickly as they can. And when you see, when I saw what they were doing, I was super impressed. And I wanted to take time out of my morning to speak in support of the application. Again, because I know those homes are challenging and I know that they typically don't, you know, they don't foster a young family very well, so what they're doing is, I think they're gonna, I think they live across the street, they're gonna move into this new home and I'm totally in support and I, again, I commend people who, who are doing that type of work in our community. I built my home about 15 years ago. And same issue, I demolished an old home, it wasn't heritage, but I walked through all of the same issues and we had an issue with a maple tree. And we had similar comments that forestry made and we resolved those comments. And I'm looking at the comments and I would humbly recommend that, you know, to support people coming into the neighborhood and taking on these types of projects, we kind of, we would hopefully as a community work with them and support them. And I believe, you know, they have an arborist, I don't, you know, I think we can, we go on and on and on, I think trees are important in our neighborhood and I've preserved a lot of trees in my own, on my own property. I believe that the application can be accommodated and approved maybe with a condition that they just have, if required, condition that they deal with a forestry and get them on site. If, if committee saw that as something that they wanted to propose. But I don't think, I would not want to see this deferred because I know that building these homes is very difficult, financing is very difficult, caring these homes is very difficult. And I would just want us as a community to do everything we can support the families like this who step up and say, we see that this home is important to the community, we're going to work, we're going to preserve it, we're going to improve it, so it just doesn't fall into a state of disrepair. So I would humbly ask that the committee support this application, thank you for listening to me, happy to answer any questions.
Adam, any questions or comments?
No, just that I would concur with the, with the speaker that, you know, adaptive reuse projects, I think are, they need to be encouraged and they, they are more expensive actually than demolishing something, so, yeah. I mean, I appreciate the black walnut tree too as well, so I'm, yeah, I'm a bit torn. For deferral, I, urban forestry is not asking for refusal, they're asking for deferral.
And, and giving us the private tree condition as an alternative? In the, in the standalone memo. Okay, is, is there anything else, we'll invite Mr. Eagleman back to offer.
If I could ask staff what the next available committee meeting would be for the app.
But are we anticipating any revisions or?
I think it's just a question of actually having a conversation with urban forestry and I, I, I have no idea what that will, you know, reveal, but I'm just wondering if that's something, like, how long would that take?
The earliest would be July 24th.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Eagleman.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'll just note in regards to the, again, the recommendation from urban forestry, their deferral recommendation notes that they would like more time for us to provide more information. I don't know what more information could be provided at this point, considering we completed, we provided an arborist support prepared by a certified arborist a, as well as a tree protection plan. So I'm not sure what the deferral would resolve. And just to, just to read, I appreciate the, the neighbors' comments regarding the tree. I'll note firstly that I provided an overhead photo of the subject property and it shows 25 Government Road. The, the neighbor's dwelling is, has a very similar design to what we're proposing, an L-shaped dwelling with a, a one-story addition that goes further out into the rear yard and extends almost to the front main wall of where the existing detached garage on the subject property is. And again, the, the lots here are, are staggered and so are the dwellings. So our rear wall of the addition will actually be pretty much in line with the neighbor's rear wall to the east at 21B Government Road. And then the houses, their rear walls actually just get further rear, to the rear of where our addition will be. Further to that, the, we are proposing a new garage at the front of the house. We could eliminate the one-story addition, which I, I, yes, I understand it encroaches into the TPZ of that black walnut tree, but we could remove that and then demolish the existing garage. And that would probably, again, I'm not a qualified arborist, but the demolition of that existing garage would probably have similar impacts to the roots of that black walnut tree. So it, and that could be done as of right, demolishing the existing garage. And I'll, I'll note, so the wording from the arborist's report is that "The foundation of the back addition is being built on helical piles to prevent significant amounts of excavation and intrusion into the tree protection zone so that the larger roots may be avoided. The construction should have minimal impact on the long-term health and structural integrity of the tree." So again, we, we, there was a lot of thought put into that tree. We designed the first floor plan, or excuse me, the basement plan shows that the addition will be built on helical piles that will significantly limit the amount of excavation and the root damage to that black walnut tree and our intention is to preserve that tree. So, and, and again, it's only one story. The, from what I saw on site, the branches of that tree start quite high. So I would imagine, again, I'm not a qualified arborist, but I would imagine that pruning would be somewhat limited, given that the addition in the TPZ is only one story. So I think that, and, and again, the, Mr. Whitmore from 25 Government mentioned the, the pool is in the TPZ as well, but that's not the case. The pool is on the far east side of the subject property, well outside of the TPZ as shown on the tree protection plan. And yes, there is a washroom and a small storage area that is only accessible outside, again, to provide some amenities for the, for using the pool, but that's only a small portion of the addition. The, the majority of the addition is an office and a family room, so additional living space. And lastly, again, I'll, I'll make a note that we worked with heritage staff, even though it's only a listed heritage property. And really, the whole reason for this application is because we are maintaining that existing heritage dwelling almost in its entirety and building this addition entirely to the rear of it. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, any questions?
I have a question, so, I, I thank you for that, I appreciate the arborist's report, it certainly is one of the more kind of detailed, specific reports that I've seen from an arborist in a while. And I note that there's a recommendation from the arborist with respect to injured trees that they're recommending that hand tools and an arborist be on site to supervise to ensure proper arboric practices are followed and no significant roots are damaged. So I'm wondering if that's something that your client is committed to following through with, based on the arborist's recommendation?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, that is something the, the client will, is willing to follow through with. The arborists will work with the client to undertake the work in that manner. And I'll just make a note as well that, as the committee is well aware, we will have to go through urban forestry's permit process for the injury permit, we will have to work with urban forestry as well. And to your point, Ms. Riddick, the, the arborist, again, did exploratory excavation to help inform the design in order to limit impacts to that black walnut tree. So there was a lot of thought in protecting that tree.
Thank you, Mr. Eagleman. Any other comments or questions?
I have a, a question, again, about, about the tree. If you, you indicated that it, it might be. If you, you indicated that it might be injured, and it is a bordered tree. My understanding, and I could be wrong on this, because I'm certainly not an arborist at all, but my, my understanding is if it's, if classified as a bordered tree, both parties have to agree on any damage to the tree?
Through you, member, through you, Mr. Chair, member Ross, it is a fair question. I'm not an arborist as well, so I have somewhat limited information on that, but my understanding in doing committee of adjustment applications for quite a while is that only if it's a removal, does the neighbor have to provide permission or consent to demolish the tree? I believe it's, if it's an injury, then it's helpful if the neighbor works with us, but I believe urban forestry can still issue an injury permit without consent from the neighbor. That's my understanding. Again, I'm not a qualified arborist, and I don't deal with permit, urban forestry permits very often, but in dealing with a lot of arborists, dealing with a lot of committee of adjustment applications, that is my understanding. And if it's not the case, then we will only be able to injure the tree if we get consent from the neighbor. So that, that will be the situation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay then, I think, let's go into committee.
Chair, I, I wanted to have a conversation with the panel. Can we deal with this and actually place a condition of urban forestry two? Is that what we're gonna be doing? Should the variances, should the variances that we're looking at be appropriate? Should that, should the variances be appropriate? Would we then have to deal with identifying the fact that this committee is applying urban forestry condition two? That's my questions to the member and perhaps staff.
I believe it's one. I think the forestry memo that's in the package says that if we, if we don't defer, then they suggest we impose condition one.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I would say condition two, it's the privately owned trees.
So what we're taxed with then is dealing with four variances and not deferring the application, we've heard all the evidence, then the urban forestry condition would be number two, I believe, Chair.
Any reaction or additional comments?
I'm somewhat assuaged that heritage planning is okay with this application. And I do think, I think this is probably one of the original houses on the street that's still left. And I do appreciate the comments of one of the people who were speaking that, you know, this is, they're preserving this house. It's probably going to be a more expensive proposition than just demolishing it and rebuilding something. And they're, they're, it sounds like they've made a great deal of effort with respect to preserving that tree. Whether it can be preserved or not is another story, but I think they're prepared to make a big effort to do that. So I'm, if less someone else has any comments or questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
So I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this application. I believe it meets the four tests, and again, I'm particularly happy that this house will be repurposed and not just demolished, as is the case with so many of the Kingsway houses. So, and yes, it would be subject to urban forestry condition number two, even though it says number one in my file.
Chair, I'll second that.
I believe there's a planning condition as well.
Yeah, I was just gonna say-
Sorry, a planning condition, yes, that I think it'd be constructed in accordance with the site plan, rear elevation, side elevation, and held on file by the committee of adjustment, submitted on April 8th, 2025.
Okay, so the motion to approve is subject to the planning condition and urban forestry two, is there a second or?
I'll second that, Chair, indeed, with that condition also from planning, the June 5th report.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion duly seconded all in favor? That's carried unanimously? Thank you, participants. Now, panel, are we in need of a break? I'm just, I want to make a suggestion, though, we have Mr. Eagleman here, who's the agent for the next item. I'm wondering if we could deal with that.
Or what, does he want 10 minutes?
Well, he's got a long drive up to Skyway Drive, he's gotta get to Montana's for lunch, so it's up to him. Do you want to proceed, or are you ready for a break?
I'm in your hands, Chair.
You're, I'm in your hands? I-
Yeah.
Okay, I say we carry on then for-
Okay.
And then we'll take a break. Okay, so, item six, 16 Kings Mill Road. Just gonna quickly summarize. Construct a newly detached dwelling with an attached garage, five variances. And all we have on file is a TTC advisory. The agent is Mr. Eagleman. I've got this labeled as straightforward and not requiring a presentation. If anyone wishes a presentation, we can ask Mr. Eagleman to provide that.
Tell me about the TTC conditions.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, just for the record, again, David Eagleman, Design Plan Services, Inc., 87 Skyway Avenue, Suite 200. So we did consult with TTC because I'm, I've worked on a few houses in this area, and I understand the, I believe it's the Bluer Street Tunnel is sort of a little bit north of Bluer Street and runs under a few dwellings there. This house in particular is more north of the tunnel itself, but it gets captured within their technical review area. They did advise that we do not need to go through their technical review process because this house is far enough away from the, the tunnel, but they do want a condition related to effectively warning clauses on agreement of purchase and sale. And I'll note, my, my client would prefer not to do that, not to have that condition. If, if the committee sees fit, then, then we would like for the application to be approved, and it may be subject to that condition, but my client would prefer not to have that condition because there was no, based on information from the owner, there was no warning clause when the house was purchased, and it just is somewhat onerous to have to provide a registrar-on-title warning clauses, and it just makes things a little bit more complicated, I guess, when you're trying to perhaps offload the property.
This, this committee does not impose TTC.
We're not imposing that condition. The TTC is imposing that condition. I just wanted to know what your thoughts were on it, that's all.
Okay, so we need any to hear more from Mr. Eagleman, or-
Nope.
Shall we just leave, if we have any questions of Mr. Eagleman, before we decide? Okay, then let's go into committee and make a decision.
So Chair, we have five variances before us. One relates to coverage, the other relates to FSI, side yard setback, length of building, and driveway width. The only one that sort of stands out is the FSI, but I think it's appropriate relative to what's being proposed here. I think the variances that are being requested are appropriate. There's no urban forestry condition here, so move approval with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a second or for Mr. Gully's motion?
I'm happy to second.
Ms. Alderson, thank you, all in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Eagleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Committee, have a great day.
And what is our wish as far as a break goes? 15 or 20 minutes?
15.
15, then we will reconvene. Actually, we're gonna stretch it out a little bit, we're gonna go to 11:15. That's an 18-minute break.[1191.08]
Okay, thanks to everyone for indulging us in a bit of a break. We'll resume now considering item seven. Three forty bracket three thirty Mill Road. Purpose of the application is to amend the development standards as outlined in bylaw four sixty five two zero twenty two for the purpose of creating fifteen additional dwelling units within building B and to permit a parking deficiency. We have clearances from transportation review, ravine and natural features protection. We have a planning condition. And we have a long list of agents. You must be Mr. Schuman. Now, if you want to share presentation time, you'll have to tell me. You have five minutes in total, so if you want three and somebody else has two or your call, tell me. Are you going to do the whole thing?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I'm not going to do the whole thing. We won't do a presentation unless the committee asks. We're happy to answer any questions. My name is Matt Schuman. I am the applicant's and owner's solicitor. A lawyer at McCarthy Tetro. My address is sixty six Wellington Street West in Toronto. Here today or online is Ms. Stephanie Quast. She is the applicant's land use planner. And then we have with us an owner representative, Mr. Robert Bader, to answer any questions, as well as the applicant's transportation engineer, Michael Gilanardo from BA Group.
Okay, so you're going to begin your presentation and then stop at some point? I'm giving this project five minutes of presentation time.
Yes, I'll talk for another thirty seconds. And if the committee would like to hear more, I can turn it over to Ms. Quast.
Okay, will you start then?
So, as the committee knows, these variances would permit the construction of fifteen additional units. This is infill, purpose-built rental housing. The building A is an existing building. And there are staff reports. They are supportive. The owner applicant is willing to accept the condition recommended by community planning. And unless there are any additional questions, I'll turn it over to Ms. Quast.
So Stephanie, sorry, Stephanie's requested to be on video. So Stephanie, I'm going to make you a panelist. And then you can go ahead and turn on your video.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, Stephanie, you're a panelist now, so you can go ahead and turn on your video if you... Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. Could I please have the presentation put on the screen?
And could you just sort of... Well, I see your name there, but just repeat it and give us your address, please.
Sure. Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Stephanie Quast. I'm a land use planner with Bowsfields. The address is three Church Street, Suite 200 in Toronto.
Thank you.
So we are here today seeking your approval of four minor variances that will facilitate the construction of a new twenty-story, purpose-built rental apartment building located at three thirty Mill Road. Next slide. The property you see here, municipally known as three thirty to three forty Mill, is located at the northwest corner of Burnham Thorpe and Mill Road. The north portion of the site, you can see, is occupied by a nineteen-story rental apartment building. The south portion, where you see the surface parking lot, this area is now under construction with the approved second rental building on the property. And that approval was from two thousand twenty-two, and that was for a nineteen-story building. So that is the portion of the property within which we are seeking the variances today. Next slide. So here just sets out very simply the official plan map and the zoning schedule there on the right side. So with the official plan, you can see that our site, as well as all four quadrants of this intersection, are designated apartment neighborhoods. And those policies in the OP really speak to supporting compatible infill development on sites that already contain existing residential buildings. And on the right side there, that is the approved zoning schedule, as I noted from our two thousand twenty-two approval. So you can see it's for a nineteen-story building that's clearly defined. Next slide. So the first three variances I'll speak to really briefly. But essentially, since that earlier two thousand twenty-two approval, our team has been working through the detailed design of this new building. And we're looking to make a few minor refinements that will result in fifteen more purpose-built rental units being provided on the property. There's no changes requested to the setbacks or even the metric height. It's simply just a change in story. And the reason for the change in story is that the ceiling, the floor-to-ceiling heights of each level, through this detailed design process, they have been lowered to eight and a half feet versus the nine-foot ceilings that were previously contemplated in the approval. So as a result of this minor reduction in height per floor, we are able to achieve one extra level, and that's the twentieth level.
Okay, thanks to everyone for indulging us in a bit of a break. We'll resume now considering item seven. Three forty bracket three thirty Mill Road. Purpose of the application is to amend the development standards as outlined in bylaw four sixty five two zero twenty two for the purpose of creating fifteen additional dwelling units within building B and to permit a parking deficiency. We have clearances from transportation review, ravine and natural features protection. We have a planning condition. And we have a long list of agents. You must be Mr. Schuman. Now, i- if you want, if you want to share a presentation time, you'll have to tell me. You have five minutes in total, so if you want three and somebody else has two or your call, tell me. Are you gonna do the whole thing?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I'm not going to do the whole thing. We won't do a presentation unless the committee asks. We're happy to answer any questions. My name is Matt Schuman. I am the applicant's and owner's solicitor. A lawyer at McCarthy Tetra. My address is sixty six Wellington Street West in Toronto. Here today or online is Ms. Stephanie Quast. She is the applicant's land use planner. And then we have with us an owner representative, Mr. Robert Bader, to answer any questions, as well as the applicant's transportation engineer, Michael Gilanardo from BA Group.
Okay, so you're, you're gonna begin your presentation? And then, and then stop at some point, or I just, I'm now, I'm, I'm giving the, this project five minutes of presentation time?
Yes, I'll talk for another thirty seconds, and if the committee would like to hear more, I can turn it over to Ms. Quast.
Okay, will you start then?
So, as, as the committee knows, this these variances would permit the construction of fifteen additional units. This is infill, purpose-built rental housing. The building A is an existing building. And there are staff reports. They are supportive. The owner applicant is willing to accept the condition recommended by community planning. And unless there are any additional questions, I'll turn it over to Ms. Quast.
So Stephanie, sorry, Stephanie's requested to be on video, so Stephanie, I'm gonna make you a part panelist, and then you can go ahead and turn on your video.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, Stephanie, you're a panelist now, so you can go ahead and turn, turn on your video if you, okay.
Okay, thank you so much. Could I please have the presentation put on the screen?
And could you just sort, well, I see your name there, but just repeat it and give us your address, please?
Sure. Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Stephanie Quast. I'm a land use planner with Bowsfields. The address is three Church Street, Suite two hundred in Toronto.
Thank you.
So we are here today seeking your approval of four minor variances that will facilitate the construction of a new twenty-story purpose-built rental apartment building located at three thirty Mill Road. Next slide. The property you he, see here, municipally known as three thirty to three forty Mill, is located at the northwest corner of Burnhamthorpe and Mill Road. The north portion of the site you can see is occupied by a nineteen-story rental apartment building. The south portion, where you see the surface parking lot, this area is now under construction with the approved second rental building on the property, and that approval was from two thousand twenty-two, and that was for a nineteen-story building. So that is the portion of the property within which we are seeking the variances today. Next slide. So here just sets out very simply the, the official plan map and the zoning schedule there on the right side. So with the official plan, you can see that our site, as well as all four quadrants of this intersection, are designated apartment neighborhoods, and those policies in the OP really speak to supporting compatible infill development on sites that already contain existing residential buildings. And on the right side there, that is the approved zoning schedule, as I noted from our two thousand twenty-two approval. So you can see it's, it's for a nineteen-story building that's clearly defined. Next slide. So the, the first three variances I'll speak to really briefly, but essentially, since that earlier two thousand twenty-two approval, our team has been working through the detailed design of this new building, and we're looking to make a few minor refinements that will result in fifteen more purpose-built rental units being provided on the property. There's no changes requested to the setbacks or even the metric height. It's simply just a change in, in story. And the reason for the change in story is that the ceiling, the floor-to-ceiling heights of each level, through this detailed design process, they have been lowered to eight and a half feet versus the nine-foot ceilings that were previously contemplated in the approval. So as a result of this minor reduction in height per floor, we are able to achieve one extra level, and that's the twentieth level, which will result in more residential units. And as such, we need a, a little increase in our residential GFA permission, and that number is an increase in five hundred and fifty square meters. Next slide. So on the left, as shown previously, that is the zoning schedule that's approved, and I've highlighted the ST nineteen, stories nineteen. On the right side, you'll see the only change we are seeking to make to this schedule, which is just to allow at the ST to be identified as twenty stories. Next slide. Here is the site plan that was previously approved and has been slightly modified now as a result of the increase in units that we are seeking. All of the previous improvements to the existing building and the new amenities on the site, as secured through the previous approval, that all remains. And in fact, through the increase in fifteen units that we are seeking, we have increased the amenity that will be provided on-site to make sure that we are in compliance with the zoning by law requirements. Similarly, we've also done the same with bike parking, so all of those amenities are all in conformity or in compliance with the zoning. Next slide. So quickly, here is just a summary chart of the four variances we're seeking, and really, we should just be focusing on the column on the right-hand side there. So you can see that we're asking for one additional story. However, the metric height, the metered height, is staying the same, so it's simply just a story revision. We're increasing the GFA as a result. The number of units, we're seeking fifteen more rental units. And then lastly there, we have a parking variance. So we are seeking to reduce the
Sorry, could you wrap up? Your five minutes have finished.
Oh, sure. Yep, so we are just seeking to reduce the parking, which would result in eighteen less spaces. So next slide. Which I believe is just a summary of the parking, but because I've run out of time
Sorry, if you could just wrap up rather than go through the rest of the presentation.
Thank you for your time. In, in short, as a, the variances do meet the four tests, in my opinion, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Panel, any questions or comments for Ms. Quast? No? And there's no speakers in the room that are, came to speak to this item? No? No one at home? Okay. So let's go into committee and discuss and or, and decide.
If no one has any questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
You ready?
Yep.
Okay, go.
So I, I, I do believe this application is minor in nature, meets the four tests. Certainly, it is a very desirable application from the point of view that we will be getting additional homes for people, which is very important. Yeah, I don't, let me just, sorry, I don't have, I don't have my comments pulled up here. I need to pull them up. It looks like transportation is okay. Community planning had one condition, which I believe was okay. And our NFP was also okay, so I'm satisfied that this does meet the four tests and move for approval with one condition, and that's the community planning condition.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. Is there a second here, Ms.?
I'll second that.
Ms. Reddick, thank you. All in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Schuman and Ms. Quast. Number eight was deferred. Number nine was deferred. So we're now looking at item ten. Eighty-nine West Rose Avenue. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are seven variances. We have Metro Links Advisory. And we have Transportation Review Department objecting to the driveway width variant seven. They want the driveway width to be as set out in zoning and not grant this variance request. We have two agents. So again, they'll have to decide how they want to split up the, the five-minute presentation time. And we have an interested party from one sixty-two Brentwood Road North, Aaron Bilowits. So I guess I'll call the top name, Rob Russell. Oh, a, a, is, is Raj Patel in person? No?
No, Mr. Chair. Raj Patel is also virtual.
Okay, Rob, Rob Russell, Raj Patel, if one of you would speak to me.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. My name is Rob Russell. I am an authorized agent for the owner. My address is one sixty-two Wolf Street, number two zero nine Georgetown, Ontario.
Okay, and Mr. Russell, are you gonna make the presentation?
Yes, I'll make the presentation. Mr. Patel's on the line in case there are questions that relate more to the architectural side of things that I may not be able to answer.
Okay. Yeah, on one hand, your application looks quite straightforward, but there is an interested party that wishes to speak to this, and there is a transportation review objection to variant seven, so I think a presentation from you would be appropriate.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. The neighbor, Aaron Bilowits, was on the line, but is no longer on the line.
Okay, well, we'll give her a chance at the end.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Russell, please proceed.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did want to point out a clarification on the transportation's comments on various number seven. We're more, we're about the size of the garage parking space and not the driveway width. So just, just a little minor point there, but I, I will speak to that a, as I go through. Just to give a little context and background, yes, I'm a registered professional planner. I also am an ECI alumni. I used to work at the old memorial pool around the corner. I have a lot of history with this neighborhood. I've seen it change over time, so I've got the professional side of my evidence, but I also have a lot of local context in, in this area. I have many friends who grew up. I have friends on Lind Grove. I have friends on, on a various streets throughout the neighborhood. That being said, this is one of the older properties that hasn't been redeveloped. It, it is a existing one-story dwelling. It is unfortunately, and, and if the, the site plan can be brought up, you'll see that it is a very awkward configured lot, and that is really the cause for a lot of these variances. So the, the lot is, uh, the, the lot, side lot lines converge slightly. It's, it's not a major convergence, but you can see the rear lot line on the north side, so the left of the drawing, that's only a twenty-five-meter-deep side lot line. And so these are the factors that, that really drive many of these variances. So in terms of the coverage, because we have a slightly smaller lot, we're of course gonna run into issues with coverage and FSI. The coverage and the FSI that are proposed, there is information submitted that shows it's in keeping with many other previous approvals in the neighborhood. Just scroll through my notes here. I'll be as brief as possible. The front wall and the front setback, part of, the, the owner wants to maintain the existing foundations and build on that. And so that has established our front wall and our side lot, side setbacks essentially. Those side walls will then be extended a little bit further back. On the north side, it's only being extended by about point nine meters. That's as far back as it goes, though. It's not a big expansion on, on the, the back of the property. The, the driveway, uh, sorry, the garage, and the reason why those, uh, those variances are required, because that is the existing garage based on the existing foundation walls. So there isn't really an opportunity to expand it without then essentially tearing down everything, demolishing everything, removing the foundation and rebuilding it all, and that's not what the owner wants to do. Scroll through the rest of my notes briefly. The, the front wall setback, as I said, reflects the existing main building. The the side yard setbacks and, and the rear yard setback, you can see there's a diagonal line. They show where that seven and a half meters is on the drawing, if you look at that closely. So it shows that seven and a half meters, so most of the, the building and the, the porches are within, like, they comply. It's just a few corners that extend over because of the angular rear lot line. So it's, on average, we provide a lot of rear yard area still. It's just there is a few minor spots where, where it approaches. I did want to speak about the Metro Links condition.
Mr. Russell, you have thirty seconds to wrap up.
Yep, this is my final point. I did want to, the Metro Links condition, we, I would request that the committee not include that. The Metro Links is overreaching. I've been involved in T-Lab applica, or T-Lab appeals, OLT appeals for Metro Links and for CN. And in all cases, these conditions have been struck from those appeals because they are overreaching. It is, a warning clause is different than a blanket
Three, four, three, two, one. You've got two or three words to wrap, or are you done?
Essentially, just the, the, what Metro Links is asking for is a blanket easement to do anything. There is no repercussion if anything happens to this property, and that is a substantial overstep on their part.
Okay, I, I could have jumped in a minute ago and told you we don't impose Metro Links conditions. We just point, point at the fact that they've issued an advisory, so we, we won't be, if, if we recommend approval, it will not be with a Metro Links condition.
Okay, and then essentially, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just gonna ask one. So it sounds like this parking space width issue is not really changeable.
Not with the removing foundation walls and reconstructing them.
Okay, panel, any other questions or comments for Mr. Russell? No? Okay, we're ready for a motion then?
Sorry, before you go into committee, Mr. Chair, we did
Oh yeah, I forgot to check back.
We have an email from the neighbor that was registered indicating that they had a meeting and schedule conflict, weren't able to attend.
Is this from Ms. Bilowits?
Yeah, one sixty, the neighbor at one sixty-two Brentwood Road North. So they did write a couple of lines. I don't know if you want me to read those out to you, but in essence, they were unable to
Sorry, no, if they're not participating.
Yeah, they were unable to attend. They have a schedule conflict.
Okay, thank you. So we're on the right track then? For a motion?
Chair, may I ask a question of the, the speaker again, of the applicant?
Okay, we'll, we'll come out of committee then and deal with that, sure.
I apologize for that, Chair. You read the conclusion of Transportation Services respect to the width of the driveway, and you indicated basically that the two-point-seven-nine is an existing driveway, correct?
Yes, that is correct, but again, i- this is the, the, the garage
Parking space, the parking space, not the driveway.
Yeah.
So no, the parking space of two-point-seven, two-point-seven-nine does not comply. You're not concerned that the garage width would not allow the the parking of a vehicle in there? Are you not concerned?
It's, that would be better answered by the, the, the owner and the client is, you know, I, I I, I drive a slightly larger vehicle. I might personally be concerned, but, you know, depending on what vehicle they, they drive, i- it may or may not be a concern, but again, it does open up a significantly larger cost to the client if they're, in order to change it. This is not just an easy design change. This is now doing a larger demolition and more reconstruction is really what's driving the factor here, and it is an existing condition where these, these are the existing dimensions of the existing garage.
Okay, thank you. Chair, I just need, need, need a minute to, to refer to some notes.
Yeah.
As Mr. Gully was saying, I think, or actually, the agent was saying, I, if they have a small car, if they have a Fiat or a Smart Car, they'll be able to get it in just fine.
I, I guess, panel, the issue is that it's, it's a new construction, though. New construction, and would you want to build a new, new home and not be able to park a vehicle of average width? That, that's really the issue.
Well, I guess we, we don't have to worry about the current homeowner, so, future owners, it's caveat emptor.
And at the end of the day, the, the garage may not be used for a parking spot. It may be used for storage, and then the vehicle sits in the driveway. And so I understand Transportation Services' concern. It's, it's an ex, it's a new build, and if you're building something new, why wouldn't you meet that standard? The width probably does accommodate small vehicles, but very, very tightly. So, and the width is of the garage, doesn't certainly mean the, the wall that holds the walls on the facade of the building that also holds the, the garage door. So even the entrance itself is gonna be narrower.
If there's no further discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Sorry?
Do, do you require more time or discussion?
So, so this is just a conversation that I'm having with the panel members. So it is a concern, the width, yeah. Just gonna pull the, the plan.
Mr. Gully, is it premature for you to consider a motion if I invite one to be tabled?
Sure, any, yeah, I'm fine with anybody wanting to make a motion, sure.
Okay, let's do that then. Are you ready?
Yeah, I'm prepared to make a motion. I'm satisfied. I'm, I, if the, the applicant is okay, you know, with building a garage that may not fit all vehicles, but perhaps fits theirs and smaller vehicles, and certainly a lot of bikes, which is the city is moving towards, then I'm prepared to, to make a motion to approve this application with no conditions. I find it's minor in nature and meets the four tests.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Reddick. A second here for Ms. Reddick's motion. Mr. Ross, thank you. All in favor? That's unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Moving on to item eleven, forty-eight Hern Hill. Purpose is to construct a new detached, attached garage and a two-story addition along the south side of the dwelling, and a one-story front and rear addition with three variances. Four letters of support from neighbors. No agency comments or concerns. Oh, sorry, Urban Forestry has requested conditions one and two. Panel, can I suggest that we treat this as straightforward, not requiring a presentation?
Mr. Chair, we do have two registered speakers.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. There's gotta be a presentation.
We really only have one, because one is not on the line.
One's enough. Yep. Which one's available? Taylor or Dawson?
Deirdre Dawson is on the line. Mark Taylor was sent an email when we started, still is not on the line.
No response.
Correct.
Okay.
They're from the same address, so I don't think that's, so if we can get Michael
They're from the same address, so I don't think that's, so if we can get Michael Foring?
Hi, committee members, good morning, I'm here.
Michael?
Yep.
Yep.
Um, so, um, I'm Michael Foring, I'm with Odammy, we're, uh, the agents representing the, the homeowners um, of 48 Hern Hill, uh, were located at 174 Spadina Avenue in Toronto.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so as you laid out, the existing property is a two-story detached house, um, and after living there since 2021, um, our clients are, are, are simply looking to add some space to make it more functional um, as their three children grow up. Um, so we've proposed to do that by adding the one-story addition to the front of the house, uh, the, the small one-story addition to the rear with, um, it's partially in interior space and partly a covered patio, um, and then the two-story addition to the side, which, um, is, is removing the existing garage um, and enlarging it and, um, and adding a new master suite above. Um, so we've submitted, uh, a supporting documentation, um, and we've shown that, you know, the street has really undergone quite widespread change over the years, as similar additions and modifications have been carried out on a number of properties. Um, the changes that we've proposed have all been designed to respond to and fit into the character of the street. Um, the gesture of building above the garage is common throughout the street as, as the, the document outlines. And in fact, many of them are quite wide, designed to, to, to fit two cars. Um, and there's also, you know, the sort of common gesture of, of bump outs, um, in the front of the building to either the entrance area or the side to, uh, the side of it, which we've also sort of kept in line with, with the new front addition. Um, in terms of the, the variances, um, so as you outlined, there are three. Um, two of them are related to setback and one is related to the driveway. Um, the setback variances are a little bit tricky in this case because of the shape of the property, um, which you see on pages two and three of the supporting documentation. Um, the property line is angled quite substantially relative to the front and side faces of the building. So what this means is that the variances required for the setbacks are very punctual in both cases. Um, at the front, the setback varies from 6.24 meters on one side of the building to 8.78 on the other side of the building, which would be compliant. Um, and then, of course, on the side, you see that, um, the setback varies from 3.17 meters at the front to as little as 1.29 at the middle, and then 3.33 at the rear. So the variances really only pertain to small portions of the building, rather than the building as a whole, uh, or than the, the faces as a, as a whole. Um, and furthermore, you know, the, the further pages in the, in the, the supporting documentation pages four to seven show that, um, there are a number of examples of houses that do not comply with the side setbacks. Um, so we are, you know, um, there are, there are substantial precedents for this. Um, in terms of the variance related to the driveway, the, the client is requesting a modest increase. Um, the existing driveway is at 5.18 meters, um, and we're looking to go up to 5.72. Um, again, they have three children, um, so two fairly large cars. So just a little bit of extra space to keep it more comfortable. Um, and again, this is quite in line with, um, the rest of the neighborhood. Um, finally, just wanted to conclude that the clients have spoken to many of the neighbors throughout the community, and as, as you've seen, there are four letters of support. Um, and this indicates to us quite clearly that the proposed changes do align, um, with the neighborhood that's undergone and, and continues to undergo change. Um, and we think that you also see this, you know, not just in the site planning, but also in the elevations as well. Um, so all things considered, we, you know, we feel that the proposed changes are, uh, do stand up to the four tests, and, and we hope that you agree.
Thank you, Mr. Foring. Panel, any questions for Mr. Foring, comments? Mr. Gully? Oh, sorry. Okay, so we'll invite, uh, Deirdre Dawson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to this, um, uh, uh, agenda item.
Okay.
My name's Deirdre Dawson, I live at 43 Chestnut Hills Parkway, which is right around the corner from, uh, 48 Hern Hill.
Yeah.
Um, I have two, uh, concerns about this application. One is the variance three, which is the driveway width. Uh, and this, both of my concerns are based on the fact that this whole neighborhood is built on an underground stream, and flooding is a very substantial problem in the neighborhood. Um, we live almost, but not quite, at the bottom of the, where the stream is, and many of the houses on Hern Hill are above us. So the more, um, coverage of lot without permeable surfaces that happens, the more substantial the flooding is in the, um, uh, in the area that I'm, that we live in particularly. And, uh, the, this happens routinely now, annually, where there's masses of water pouring down the street and through our yards, um, that is not able to be, um, caught by the storm drains. So, um, so my first concern in relation to that is really with the driveway width. And I know it's, uh, the variance requested is, is mine is quite small relative to the current driveway, but the, um, permitted driveway width i- in the law, bylaw is 4.27 meters, and the proposed driveway is 5.72 meters, which is an additional 34% of coverage over the maximum permitted. The second concern I'm raising is with regards to the urban forestry, uh, conditions. So at the moment, there's no information about how the private tree, which is immediately behind the house, will be affected. It, it seems from the application that they will have to cut down this tree. This is a very large, uh, shade-producing tree, which is, again, in, very much in keeping with this neighborhood. The neighborhood is, is full of old 70s, 67-year-old tr- trees, um, which is part of its character and much appreciated by everyone in the neighborhood, and also important for managing water. So I'm a little, I, I am concerned that the, um, application hasn't got any details of what is going to happen with this tree and where that will proceed, um, how, how that will affect the building.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll just make one comment, that urban, urban forestry is, uh, is aware of the city-owned tree at the front and the privately-owned tree in the back, because they have imposed conditions of approval to injure or remove trees in the ci- on the city property and the private property. But anyway, the, um, the agent can address that as well on rebuttal. Panel, any questions for Ms. Dawson before we invite Mr. Foring?
Chair, I just wanted to, to indicate to the speaker, she indeed took the time to be here with us to share her views, um, that, uh, should this application be approved, the reason why transporti- uh, sorry, urban forestry has placed conditions one as two, is to exactly answer the question that the speaker had. So should this application be approved? It would only be approved with urban forestry conditions one and two. As far as drainage is concerned, uh, when they go for building permit, they will be required to submit, um, plans that, uh, show contours and the manner in which, uh, water would be, um, distributed, would flow, uh, on the site, and ensure that it stays on the side, or it goes onto the street.
Thank you, Mr. Gully, is there anything else? Just gonna invite Mr., oh, and Mr. Taylor, who lives at the same address and is not available to speak anyway, so we'll just carry on. Mr. Foring?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, yeah, I, I can speak to both of those. Um, so the, the, the private tree in the back, the, the intention is to, um, is to remove that tree, um, and we'll be submitting, um, to, 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 to acquire a, a, a permit to, uh, to injure or remove the tree. With regards to the drainage, um, you know, we're still well within the requirements for soft landscaping, um, in the front and in the back. Um, you know, the rest of the front will primarily be soft landscaping. Um, and, you know, the driveway and the landscaping slope towards the street where there's, um, a large ditch for, um, for water distribution. So, you know, we do feel fairly confident that there should be, you know, no issues with, um, with drainage on the property, giving, given the, the, the conditions here, um, which seem to be, you know, well in place to, to allow for like a, a, effective drainage on the property.
Okay. Can, uh, can you so, tell me, tell us what the width of the existing driveway is?
Um, yeah, just one moment, please. The existing driveway is, I had it here, sorry, just one second. It's 5.18 meters currently, and we're looking to bump it up to 5.72 meters.
Okay, thank you. Panel, any other questions for Mr. Foring? Okay, can we go into committee for discussion if we need it, or a decision?
Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. Chair, unless, unless there are other discussions by panel members?
Go for it.
Uh, Chair, three variances before us. Uh, one relates to front yard setback, the other relates to side yard setback, and the last one relates to, uh, driveway width. Given the, um, uh, configuration of the lot, and given the sensitivity of the proposal to try to, um, adhere to variance number two by, uh, creating, um, bit of a jagged side on one side of the building to try to adhere to the side yard, uh, requirements. I believe this application is a very good application. I'm going to move approval subject to urban forestry conditions one and two.
I'm happy to second that motion.
Okay, uh, motion by Mr. Gully, seconded by Ms. Allison, all in favor? You're opposed, Mr. Ross? Okay, unanimously approved, thank you. Moving on to item 12, 47 Arthur Griffith Drive. We have, um, purpose is to construct a two-story rear addition. The altered dwelling will contain three dwelling units. There is one variance. We have, uh, three letters of opposition. Yeah, okay, um, I guess in light of the opposition, we should ask for a brief presentation from the agent, Nasir Bashir.
Thank. Uh, my name is Nasir Bashir, and, uh, my address is 47 Arthur Griffith Drive, Toronto. And thank you, Mr. Chairman and the members.
Sir, you're, you're the owner of this property?
I'm the owner of the property.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So the rear, uh, setback, what I understand is from the northwest corner of the proposed block, and my back lot line is not parallel to the proposed construction, it is going on the side, and it keep increasing in the, along the width of the property line. And if we consider the average setback available, it will be in compliance or very close to the compliance. So that's the only variation.
Okay.
So I think, like, we, we, it's fair to take the average of the setbacks from one corner of the building to the other corner, because it's, it's like, every, and average will be within the compliance or very close to the compliance.
Okay. So if you want, uh, any questions for Mr. Bashir before we listen to the neighbors? Nope, okay. If you could just take your seat, and maybe not go too far away.
Thank you.
And we're gonna go down our little list here, I guess, starting with Gregory Tucci?
Yep.
Your, your next-door neighbor?
We do have Gregory, um, Dennis also registered, but Dennis is not on the call. He was sent an email, just Gregory for now.
So we only have the one?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Tucci?
Yes, I'm here, and, uh, yeah, I'm representing the owners of the, uh, of the property next door, which is, uh, 47, just one second. We're at 45, we're the attached, uh, we are attached to the property that, uh, the gentleman is making the application for.
Sorry, Mr. Tucci, sorry, before you continue, can we also get your, um, business address, please, for the record?
Sure, it's, uh, 9401 Jane Street, Unit 118 in Vaughan, and the postal code is L6A4H7.
Thank you.
Adam, thank you.
Okay, so I am the, I am the owner, the applicant, the owner, so.
Okay.
He represents 45.
Right.
Okay, sorry, carry on.
So, um, the, my clients, first of all, I should disclose that they're related to me. So I'm making this up, I'm speaking on their behalf from more of an aesthetics situation. You have the letter that we wrote in. Um, the, the, the proposed construction is not in line with what's, the way the subdivision is set out. And I understand that there's room for changes and variations. However, because this is a semi, when he puts this in, it's going to throw off the whole, the whole look of the house. Uh, it's going to interfere with their privacy, um, it's going to interfere with their sunlight. Um, it, and the other thing is that he wants to build three additional bedrooms, which means that they're going to be occupied by people, he wouldn't be building three additional. What's gonna happen with the parking? Um, I don't know, he hasn't spoken to the parking, but the parking is going to be out in the middle of the street. Uh, it is already, we have pictures, I've gotten my clients to take pictures of where the cars are situated. Um, so I, 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 it, it's gonna cause a lot of problems in that respect, and it's also gonna cause an issue, I believe, uh, when somebody tries to buy this property, and they walk into the backyard, and now there's, they've got three bedrooms overlooking into their yard. So, uh, it's not, the, the, the property itself is not, uh, open to this type of, to this type of extension. That, that's all my clients are, are concerned about. It's, it's what it's gonna look like, what it's gonna do to their property value, uh, when they go to sell this property. That, that's all I have to say, I mean.
Okay, thank you. Panel, any questions for Mr. Tucci?
Chair, I had just one fast question of Mr. Tucci. Mr. Tucci, you realize that he's not asking for any side yard variances, eh?
I'm aware of that. I'm aware of that.
And the rear yard, uh, setback, which really doesn't impact, uh, neighbors on either side, uh, the reason it's, uh, nine is because of, again, the odd-shaped lot. Uh, still very close to the 12.2 meter, uh, required. So how, how would, how would it impact the neighbor? I, I'd like to understand that.
Well, it's, it's aesthetics, and it's gonna impact the neighbor because he's gonna have, he's asking for a two-story extension. So those bedrooms are gonna overlook right on to, over and on to the, the, the backyard that my clients are, are, are enjoying. It, it's a, it's a big privacy issue. If he's not gonna put any windows on that side of the building, where, where his extension is, then we don't have an issue with privacy. But if he's gonna put windows on those bedrooms overlooking the, the backyard, then we have an issue with privacy.
Uh, you know, Mr. Tucci, that the, the, uh, material building code would dictate whether or not windows are permissible or not.
I, I, I'm aware.
But as far as overlook, um, you have to understand this is part of the city of Toronto. Uh, this is one way of, uh, being, uh, accommodating, uh, larger families, more families. And, uh, when no side yards, uh, are being, uh, side yard variances are being requested, there's no issue with respect to the length of the building, there's no issue with respect to the depth. Um, it's hard to rationalize, um, not, uh, allowing, uh, in addition such as being proposed to go, to move forward.
Fair enough. I'm just, I, I've had already discussed that with my clients, and I told them. I'm just gonna go and speak to it to let your, your, your views be known. And I know that the other neighbors have the same, you know, basically the same complaint, the same issue, um, with the construction as we do. Um, like I said, I don't know what they're gonna do about parking. And that's a big problem.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Okay, um.
Sir, you're familiar with the fact that building code requires there be.
Sorry, sorry, excuse me. Who are you addressing to? Who are you addressing?
The previous speaker, who had the objection.
Okay, normally I invite questions, but, but anyway, yeah, go ahead and ask your question.
I, I, I just wanted to make sure you were aware that the building code, the building code had come up. that the building code, the building code that come up requires windows and bedrooms.
Sorry, you'll have your chance in a second. Finish your point or your question.
Okay, I've got it on. The building code requires bedrooms have windows.
Sorry, if you have to go to the microphone.
Sorry, Mr. Ross, are you asking the applicant a question?
Yes.
Okay, well. Let's, why don't you come up? And first of all, you can do your rebuttal to your neighbor, and then Mr. Ross can ask you his question.
Okay, that's fair.
Let's do that. All right. You heard from your neighbor, and it's your chance to speak to his concern.
So I heard what his objections were. Number one, the light, the sunlight. So their house is on the side where the sun rises, so they get sun first. So I will be blocking sunlight for myself on my right side. Their windows to the bedrooms are already on backyard. I'm just extending my bedroom, and the windows are already there. So there's no change in the location of the windows. I'm just changing. My windows are in the backyard right now. So when I will be constructing the block, the window will be in the same line. So windows are already there. So there's no privacy issue. It's already there. And for the parking, my driveway accommodated for four cars. It's big parking place. No player. And I'm building for my family. Like, I have two sons, and I fear that they won't be able to afford another house. So I want to accommodate my two sons with me. And that's basically for my family.
Okay.
So I don't see any, like, valid objection from... And plus, whatever I am constructing is attaching to my existing block, and it will be the same, no new construction material, same brickwork, everything, and it will be hardly noticeable that there will be any addition. So my lot is a quite big lot.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Ross, you...
I think he's answered the question.
Sorry?
I say, I think you've answered my question and concern.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. Sir, have you read? You can stay at the microphone. Come up to the microphone, please. Have you actually read the letters of opposition?
Sorry, again?
Have you read the letters on file in opposition?
No. I didn't know. I did not even knew somebody. They can speak to me. I could satisfy them, but nobody approached me. And we are neighbors for the last twenty-two years.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to committee then, and we can discuss if we need to or consider a motion. You're fine, sir. Take your seat.
Chair, I just wanted to state that in committee discussion that some of the letters, of course, you know, indicate that they're in opposition. They don't specify why they're objecting to it. They just say, express our concern and opposition regarding the proposed building project, which they have a right to do so. I'm sort of puzzled as to why they would be objecting. And just for clarity's sake, it's not just three bedrooms. It's three units we're dealing with, right? So it's to construct two-story rear addition. The altered dwelling will contain three dwelling units. Now, that doesn't make it illegal. It's permitted. The one variance that's before us is the variance with respect to the rear yard setback. I know it's a concern to residents. It is in the rear yard. I did consider this application carefully, especially related to the fact that there were some opposition letters, but they weren't necessarily specific as to why they were objecting. Transportation services have not provided any comments to us to indicate that they object to what's being proposed or that the parking is not being adhered to. The performance standards of the bylaw are not being adhered to because there's no parking variance here.
I do sympathize, though, with the owner of the other half of the building. This is a semi-detached, and it will ultimately affect the value of his home. And it could impact it in a good way, and it could also impact it in a bad way. It is a semi-detached. And I, the letters that I read, there was some concern about the ongoing maintenance or lack thereof of maintenance on the property. So I think their concerns are valid, and just wanted to say that.
Yeah, I think there would be an expectation on buying a semi-detached unit that the rear wall would remain identical on my neighbor. I think that's, that would be an unreasonable expectation. You know, it's one thing to have a detached, well-separated building, and the neighbor wants to expand, but it's pretty sensitive when the neighbor is attached. And I get the sense that's sort of what they're saying in different words.
Yeah, I do feel that they're expressing their concern that the value of their home will depreciate. And we have, what, three neighbors' letters? It's not just, not just the immediate neighbor that's in the semi. It's also on the other, on other sides of the property.
Sure, also perhaps we need some clarification for staff. I believe that the proposed addition provides a setback from the adjacent unit, the adjacent semi-detached unit, the way I read the plans. Perhaps one of the staff members might be able to confirm that that is the case? I believe there's a setback, the building itself of zero point seven six meters, so from the adjacent semi.
Yes, it is setback, I bet.
So the addition is not attached to the other side of the semi.
So we ready for a motion, one way or another?
I'm actually, I'm prepared to make a motion. And I understand and I'm sympathetic to the concerns raised by the neighbors. However, I do agree that it's Toronto, and there really isn't relatively any expectation of privacy in your backyard. And I, and as noted by the applicant, there are currently windows overlooking the backyard. This addition will just be, there'll be more windows. I don't agree that, about the comment about the expectation of semis necessarily remaining consistent with adjoining semis. I've seen examples of semis all through the city where they are not identical, and some are aesthetically pleasing. And that's my personal observation. But certainly, there is no, it's not unusual to see semis that are not consistent in terms of their construction throughout the city of Toronto. Given those comments, I'm prepared to make a motion to support this application. I find it to be minor nature and consistent with the foretest.
And there are no...
And there are no conditions that I'm aware of.
Right. Okay, so we have a motion from Ms. Ruddock. Is there a seconder?
Chair, I'm prepared to second that.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. Moving on to item thirteen. Thirty-two Revolde Road. Purposes to permit a vehicle repair shop and a vehicle depot. There's one variance. We have six letters of support. And we have community planning recommending refusal because the proposed use is not permitted in the E L zone or, as an alternative, a three-year time limit. The agent is Tyler Walker. Mr. Walker, good afternoon. Is it still afternoon? Yeah, it's afternoon.
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, if you can address very straightforward application here, just talk to us a bit about planning's view here or suggestion that a three-year time limit be granted if we approve this application.
Sure. Would you like the whole presentation or just that aspect of it?
Well, no, you, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Tyler Walker, thirty-eight Tiverton Avenue. I'm the designer representing the owner, Chris. Chris bought the property with the hopes of starting a vehicle repair shop and is very excited to be given the opportunity to do so. I know technically that's not relevant, but it helps you give the motivation behind our proposal. And to that end, we feel the variance being requested meets all four of the committee's criteria for approval. It's appropriate for the development of the land and building. The general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaws maintained. The general intent and purpose of the official plan is maintained, and the variance being requested is minor. To begin, I would like to address the community planning report. I spoke directly with Alyssa Hawley, the planner who wrote the report, to fully understand its intent. She explained to me that community planning was not against the proposal per se, but that they didn't feel they had enough information to support it. That's why they included the two options within their recommendation. Option one was to have the committee refuse our proposal and that we would then apply for a zoning bylaw amendment, which would allow for a compatibility and mitigation study. Option two was for the committee to approve our proposal, but only for a period of three years. In my opinion, this option two is the superior of the two options. As Alyssa Hawley explained to me, this would allow community planning to collect real-world data on the effects on the neighborhood instead of performing a study that would show what people believe the effects on the neighborhood would be. And then after three years, thirty-two Revolde Road could be judged on its actual impact on the neighborhood, and the decision of the committee could be revisited. Deeper in the report, the community planning states that it feels that our proposal is not minor. On this, I have to disagree, and past decisions of the Committee of Adjustment seem to agree with me on that. When I made a research request for the committee's past decisions within the neighborhood, I found at least five involving the permitted use of properties. Four of the five, including two vehicle repair shops, the Committee of Adjustment had no trouble rendering a decision deeming these both acceptable and minor variances. To this, given this, sorry, I feel our proposal fits well within the definition of a minor variance. The strongest reason for support of our proposal, however, is that vehicle repair shops and vehicle depots are incredibly common in this neighborhood and on Revolde Road specifically. As shown in our supporting documents, there are four similar vehicle repair shops on the west side of the same block as thirty-two Revolde Road. Also, there are thirteen buildings with similar vehicle depots, again, on the west side of the same block as thirty-two Revolde Road. All of these existing examples abut the neighboring residential zone. One block north on Revolde Road, it has exactly the same situation. Vehicle repair shops in this neighborhood could not be more common, and there is nothing unique or different regarding our proposal in comparison to these existing buildings. Finally, we canvassed the neighborhood and found no objections to what we are proposing. Six local residents and businesses signed forms attesting to this fact, which is shown, again, which is shown in our supporting documents. Further to this, no neighbor has come to oppose our submission to the committee. For these reasons, we feel the proposal satisfies all of the committee's four criteria for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Panel, any questions or comments for Mr. Walker?
Chair, I just have one question. Mr. Walker, what's in the unit now?
It's a vehicle repair shop. My client only found out that he wasn't allowed to have it after he bought the property from a vehicle repair shop. He applied to have his license transferred and was told that he wasn't allowed.
Okay, so it is a use that was in practice prior to your client purchasing it?
Yes.
Okay.
It looks to be kind of a similar use to the neighbor Gonzalez.
It's exactly the same.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. Any other questions or comments?
I guess, just, sorry, Chair, just a follow-up question.
Just real quick. Is there anyone in the room that's here to speak to other than the applicant? No? And no one at home? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Gully.
Supposedly, planning has an issue with respect to the fact that it backs onto residential.
Uh huh.
Otherwise, Revolde is all employment uses. And a lot of those employment uses relate to automotive uses, I believe, and I understand.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Chair, I believe that the use that's being requested here is an appropriate use, although this type of use is not permitted under the zoning bylaw, and that's why they're here. However, it's a relatively small unit. It fronts on a road that was built as an industrial road, now known as Employment Use Road. And the sensitivity is the fact that it does back onto residential properties. The only impact it has is parking, more than anything else, because the building is well set back from the rear lot line, which they share with the residents on the west side. I believe that in order to start a business of this type, I understand what planning is saying, but I believe that five years would be a better way of determining whether or not that use is appropriate. Three years, it'll take the applicant, whoever he or she is, a year to set up, create clients. Three years is not enough to make that kind of an investment. And I know that we're not here to look at the investment aspect. We're here to look at the use aspect and how it relates to the performance standards in the zoning bylaw. I'm going to move approval of this application for the temporary five years rather than three. Three years, I believe, is not sufficient to assess in real life, statistics as planning is saying, sufficient time to do that kind of assessment. I think five is, would be more appropriate. So I move approval for five years. Whether or not the applicant continues after that two years, that's up to them, but I'm moving for five years.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve of the time, five-year time limit made by Mr. Gully, seconded by Ms. Ruddock. All in favor? That's approved unanimously.
Thank you so much.
And I think we all know that the global economic conditions that we currently understand will somehow be different in five years.
It looks that way.
Hopefully. Okay, thank you. So it has been suggested to me that it might be a good time to take an extended break. We do have some significant items coming up that will no doubt take some time. So I'm proposing that we break until one-thirty, and then we'll come back and deal with items fourteen to twenty-one. Does that sound good to folks? One-hour break?
Chair, may I ask?
Chair, may I ask whether number sixteen? Will there be someone here for number sixteen?
Well, let's just see. Just, can you just? I'm just gonna go from my left to right here. Can you just tell me what item number you're here for? That's sixteen. Fourteen? Ma'am?
Fifteen.
Thirteen?
No, one-five.
One-five, okay. That's three consents, sorry. Yes, ma'am?
Nineteen.
Okay. Okay. And somebody just disappeared in the back. So... Uh, so, um,
Yeah.
We might not be dealing with sixteen. Another half hour, see where, see where we're at? Okay, then let's, let's, uh, carry on with the view to going until one P M. So, um, item fourteen, one-oh-five-oh Kipling Avenue.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair and community members. My name is, uh, Tom Frop.
Okay, just a second please. So you're proposing, um, consent to sever and a minor variance application for each of the proposed parts. Uh, we have, um, engineering, construction services, and transportation review conditions. We have, uh, community planning tells us that Kipling Avenue is a quote "avenue" in O P A seven-seven-eight. However, that O P A is under appeal. Um, it does contemplate gentle intensification on Kipling Avenue, and I guess what we have to deal with is whether lot area infurtagh, uh, that doesn't really exist in the immediate context here, is in fact gentle, but anyway, we'll get there. We have urban forestry conditions. Two, three. Recommendation to refuse, and then a standalone memo, memo, uh, offering condition two. So, I guess we certainly do need a presentation from Mr. Gurel, and I think you started speaking, Mr. Gurel.
Yes, good afternoon.
Yeah.
Um, we're proposing to do severance on property, uh, ten-fifty Kipling. Um, we're not by any means trying to set a precedence. There are already four, uh, properties that have been severed in the immediate area. We're talking Kipling between Burnhamthorpe and Dundas. So it's, uh, that sliver, um, where there have been four approved. Uh, we did talk with planning, we went back with them. This actually is a project that's been going on for almost two years. Um, they did have comments, uh, then they kind of backed off. But the biggest issue was, um, the, the transportation. They wanted us to road, uh, give them road widening. So we did, in fact, do that. Um, we didn't like the idea very much, because we did have to push the houses back. Our, our lot sizes became smaller because of that. And if you have an aerial view and you look at the houses to the left and right of that house, and we're talking ten streets, um, to the left, ten streets right, none of, none of them are really pushed back. So for that widening to take place, I'm sure it will take a good twenty to thirty years. But we agreed to it, because, um, we are here to work with the city, we are here to try and, uh, densify the city as, as the city does want to do, and then we just want to also be part of that.
Are you, are you finished?
Yes, for the timing, because I'm sure there will be questions, and if there's any opposition, they'll have to.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just, you, you mentioned at the outset, there are some precedents along Kipling. I'm looking at the location map that, uh, shows property boundary. I don't, I don't see anything like this, um, you know, in, in the vicinity of, uh, Matisse and Kipling. Can you, can you just mention some addresses?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, um, property, uh, ten-twenty-three, there's, uh, semis, and that's if you're going south on Kipling, um, closer to, uh, Tyree Avenue. Uh, then, then if you see that, on the.
No, that doesn't show up on the map that we're looking at here.
The map that's there, you have Nora. So it's pretty much Nora, um, let me see. So see the house that's cut off right the, at the corner there? It's the exact house right after that one, funny enough.
Like, far right-hand edge, like seventy-two?
Um, I'll tell you. Yes, yeah, ten-twenty-seven, so it's the immediate one right beside it, yes. On Nora, on the east side. That would be twenty-twenty-three. And then there's also thirty, which is on the map, um, I don't know, right beside, but it's, it is on this map, on to, on to, ten-thirty. That one has severed as well. And that's on the same side.
Right, you see, ten-thirty, right at the bottom, I see that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So that one was also approved. And then there's the other two that I was talking about, which were, uh, nine-seventy-eight and nine-eighty-two, but that's, uh, more north before Burnhamthorpe.
Yep, okay.
And then there's also one that is ten-ninety. That one, um, came to committee. It has been granted to be severed, but there is no plans that are associated with it. So I'm sure that this one will come, uh, in front of committee at some point or another, once there's a design. But they did get the severance.
Okay, are you okay with urban forestry conditions, two and three? Private?
Yes, we are.
Cash and Luke, yeah? And, uh, what about, I think you referenced it, engineering, construction, and transportation conditions?
Yeah, we, we, we had to actually get an art plan, a survey completed, where we denotated that road widening, and then we started, uh, a lot, a lot of back and forth with the zoning examiner. That was now our new, um, front yard setback. And to comply with the front yard setbacks, we started that point. So that's why we only have four variances, because we made sure that we didn't have building length, side yard setbacks, and front yard setbacks. That's why there was a bit of back and forth, because we didn't want to, uh, address as many of those as possible.
Okay. Panel, any other questions, comments? And we do have someone in the room that came to speak to, item fourteen, I believe? No? No one in the room, and no one at home? Okay. So I guess it's over to us then to go into committee and consider, uh, making a decision on this. The, the only thing I'll say at the outset is that we've got this issue about O P A seven-seven-eight, um, which, uh, you, you know, is obviously supported by the planning department. It is under appeal. So it's not officially in place, needless to say. So, again, in my mind, we have to determine whether or not, um, I guess the appropriateness of anticipating approval when it hasn't been approved, the O P A, I mean? And whether or not this does represent the gentle intensification, um, benefit that comes from O P A seven-seven-eight? So just, my opening thoughts, anyway. No. Yeah, a motion would be good.
Chair, I'm prepared to speak on this item. I have carefully reviewed the application before us in terms of severance, and, um, also the variances that are being requested to accompany that, of the severance. I'm happy to see that, uh, the applicant understands, uh, the validity of the road allowance being requested. It's imperative that, uh, the Kipling Avenue, uh, right-of-way widening take place as stipulated in the official plan. Uh, so I think, uh, the applicant and, uh, also, uh, the owners of the land understand uh, the reason for that, uh, requested widening. I believe the variance is appropriate. It's on a major arterial road. It's between Burnhamthorpe Road and the city, the new, evolving city center at, uh, old Six Points, uh, Kipling Avenue, uh, subway. Um, it's an appropriate use of land. It is, in my view, modest intensification. So I'm going to move approval to the severance subject to standard conditions. And I'm also going to move the variances being requested, uh, subject to development, subject to development engineering, uh, comments, as well as urban forestry conditions, two and three.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a second or for Mr. Gully's motion? Mr. Ross, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. You approved? Okay, unanimous approval. Thanks, all. Okay, now, um, Madam Sec, Deputy Secretary of Treasury, number fifteen, this is consent for a lot addition and easement. Is, is this something that is not normally delegated to staff?
Yes, the consent should not have been included in your package, so the only thing the members are considering today is the variance.
So we are, we are dealing with it?
You're only dealing with the variance for the reduced parking deficiency.
I don't see a variance.
Yeah, notice, part four.
Oh, notice, part four?
Yep. So as a result of the proposed lot addition,
I got you.
They're losing some of their parking spaces.
So the, the consent for lot addition and easement is delegated. However, this committee is dealing with the notice for part four, which is permitting, to permit a parking deficiency for the reduced lot. So we're kind of presuming that staff is going to approve the lot addition, if we do we tie staff's hands by agreeing with this, or?
No, the applicant has some revisions to make for the consent, but you can deal with the variance today.
Okay. Uh, okay, so we have, um, Metro Links Advisory. Okay, now I'm just confused about what these conditions apply to. No. E C S and Trans Review, they wouldn't apply. Planning's okay to schedule. There, there's been some debating going on back and forth with Metro Links, but we don't impose Metro Links con- conditions. So I think we can treat this variance, um, as being without conditions. And there it is, it's a single variance, minimum of thirty-four spaces required, twenty-three to be provided. No conditions, no comments.
I'm prepared to make a motion if.
Do you want to hear from the applicant?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Well, yeah, there's someone.
And we also have a neighbor in chambers.
Yes. So we don't, I guess, I guess we need the agent's permission to proceed. Sandra Luna Martinez?
Hi, good afternoon. Yes, Sandra Luna Martinez, from Miller Thompson.
Yeah, I don't know if you were listening to the little preamble thing going on here, but thi- this committee's authority is limited to the minor variance for part four, the parking deficiency?
Yes, understood.
You understand. It's, it's very simple, clear, straightforward. We, we were hoping that you would agree to not making a presentation. Um, and, and Lou, answering a question or two, if we have any.
Yes, you're happy for a presentation. I am happy to answer any questions uh, and clarify how the minor variance and the consent are interrelated, if needed.
Okay, so panel, any questions before we?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, do we want to speak?
Yeah, I know. I'm not calling for a motion. I'm now going to invite Helen Much. Would that be appropriate? A Mimico Presbyterian Church trustee.
Thank you. Um, yes, it's from Mimico Presbyterian Church, Church Trustees, one-one-nine Mimico Avenue. I didn't intend to speak or ask a question, but now that I'm here.
Okay.
Do these?
That's fine.
No. Do these changes affect Mimico Adult Center property? That's really all the church wants to know.
Okay, now, first of all, we're limited right now to one item, and that's reducing the number of required parking spaces.
Yeah, yes.
Nothing about buildings or anything else.
Between St. Leo's Church and the Mimico Adult Center, we think that's where it's going in. But the drawings are so complicated that people have difficulty understanding them. So, if you can't give me an answer today, that's fine. I will accept that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Much. And is there anyone else at home or online? Or in, in the, in the room or online? No? So we can proceed with a motion, then?
Well, perhaps Sandra could answer her question.
Sorry?
Perhaps the agent can answer the neighbor's question.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, that's fair enough. Sandra Luna Martinez?
Yes, through you, Chair. Um, with respect to the parking variance, which is in front of us today.
Yeah, you heard, you heard Ms. Much. She says it's very complicated. A lot of people don't understand what's going on. So maybe you could take an opportunity to help clarify?
Sure. Um, just to answer her question, um, with respect to the parking on the Mimico Adult Learning Center, uh, this required variance will not be impacting the current supply of the, uh, learning center. Um, we are seeking a variance to permit a reduced amount of parking spaces uh, on the Toronto Catholic District School Board lands, which is the ones to the south, if we can look at the site plan. I'm not seeing it on my screen. Uh, I don't know if you are. But the, the variance before us today should not have any impact on the parking supply of the Mimico Learning Center.
Yeah, I didn't hear. Sorry, you faded it at the end there. What was your point?
Sorry, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Oh, sorry about that. To answer the neighbor's question, um, and with respect to the parking issue, uh, that we are discussing today, the relief from the parking requirements for the Toronto Catholic School Board's lands will not have any impact on the learning center's parking supply.
Okay.
There is no work, uh, taking place on the, uh, learning center's lands, uh, and so there should not be any changes for, uh, the nearby residents.
Okay, thank you. Panel, any questions, clarifications? Nothing? So we can entertain a motion, then?
Uh, Chairman, I'm prepared to speak on this, uh, this item. We have one variance with respect to a reduction in parking. Uh, I believe that the reduction that's being requested is appropriate, is justified. Uh, access to high-order transit, as well as surface transit, is available. And the reduction in parking, I believe, will not, uh, cause any grief to any adjoining, uh, properties or, uh, public road system. Move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. A second or for Mr. Gully's motion?
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Alderson, thank you very much. All in favor? That's approved unanimously? Okay, why don't we try and get through this one, number sixteen? Five Verona Avenue. Uh, application for consent. Two applications for variance, one application for each of the proposed parts. We have, uh, development review conditions. And I had a question about, um, variance four, for the variances. I'll just have to pull this up and see what my question was.
I have a question, too.
The minimum rear yard setback is seven-point-five. The new dwelling will be located one-point-two meters from the front lot line. So I just, it starts off talking about rear yard and ends up talking about front lot line. So I didn't understand that. Anyway, um, the agent is Bruno Lopez? Or Lopes?
Hi, members of committee. It's actually Igor Polk here. Uh, I'm speaking on behalf of Bruno, because we work together, he couldn't make it. Uh, we're from MXL Engineering, sixteen forty-nine Central Avenue West.
Can you spell your last name?
K O C K.
Okay, just before you present, could you just take a look at variance number four for both parts? And, and, and explain them or clarify them? They, they seem to be talking about two different yard setbacks. Yeah, they both are. It says the minimum required rear yard setback is seven point five meters. The new dwelling will be located one point two three meters in one case, and one point two nine from the front lot line. I, I, there's obviously a confusion there, could you clarify?
Yeah, let me just try to get a hold of the zoning notice here, but, so, just before I jump into that, I'd like to clarify something. We actually already went through committee for this same project, with exact same design, two years ago, and we got approved, and we're only back today because we couldn't meet all the conditions within the two-year deadline, because we had multiple conditions, and one of them was providing new sanitary and water within Verona Avenue, to be reviewed and approved by the Engineering Department, which was a huge back and forth, and we get them to review, but we missed the two-year deadline, so we are here today to ask your blessing on something that was already previously approved. And regarding that setback, is, because if you look at the drawings, we are switching the orientation of the house. So the lot is pretty deep, and we are doing two houses, and they're facing the adjacent street, which is also Verona Avenue, so if you see the site plan, if you, if you, if you can scroll and bring up the, yeah, this is the lot severance, part one and two. On the left, that's the original front yard, yeah, there. So if you scroll, go to the next page, please. Can go to the next page, the site plan, not the property survey, there. So we have, we have the houses rotated to the other street because of corner lot. So that probably is why the zoning examiner switched the name from front to side yard setback.
Okay, thank you. Are you finished your presentation?
I'm happy to answer any other questions. Again, I'd like to reiterate that we already got approved for this, and we're just trying to reset the clock to keep going the conditions and satisfying Engineering Department on this.
Yep, I understand. So questions, comments?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
So on the, um, on the detached dwellings, uh, there appear to be two garage doors on the front elevation on the main floor, is that correct?
Correct.
So there's just a very narrow door and, and two fairly wide garage doors that take up the entire front of both houses?
We tried to size to give a decent garage parking for the, for the future owners. If you, if you want to, if I may, if you want to scroll down and show up the floor plans and the front elevation, so we can discuss.
So basically, you just have a garage on the main floor then?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else, panel?
So just to clarify, it seems the consent was refused in the previous application, you said it was approved?
So twenty twenty-one, the owner wanted to try to push the boundary and go for three houses. We advised against, but he really wanted us to try, and we sent the petition in, and we didn't get approved, as we originally thought. So that wasn't twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-two, we went with the exact design that you guys look now, with the exception of the charger for, for electric cars, that became a zoning violation in the meantime. So twenty twenty-one, we didn't get approved, but it was a different design. Twenty twenty-two, we, we got it. We got the notice of decision and the final binding, and that's the set-up trajectory we're looking at right now.
Anything else? Is there anyone in the room to speak to, item sixteen? Okay, come on up, give us your name and address, please.
Hello, Mr. Chair, committee members. Ryan Breen, twenty Verona Avenue. I have been a resident of Verona Avenue for over forty years. I am opposed to the severance of the five Verona property from its current access position, along with the front door entrance access, and oppose the proposed relocation of the existing driveway location orientation of the current west-facing access to a proposed south-facing driveway access. Verona Avenue is a rather unique street, unique because it is now a T-shaped street with a single name. From the mid nineteen twenties until the late nineteen eighties, Verona Avenue was a straight roadway running from Buttonwood, running south to a dead end. During the late nineteen eighties, the city decided to acquire a section of the forested hillside running parallel on the east side of Verona Avenue to construct a connecting road from Verona Avenue to Emmett Avenue. Buttonwood Avenue access to Weston Road had been closed at this time, at Jan and Weston. This new section, to also named Verona, is commonly referred to the neighborhood residents as the Verona Link. It is on this Verona Link that the application is now requesting variances to build two single-family home dwellings with two driveways accessing the Verona Link. The topography grade level of the short Verona Link drops about twenty feet between Verona Avenue and Emmett Avenue, and sightlines are challenging from all directions. In two thousand and ten, there were two parcels of land owned by the owners of fifty-five Emmett, a high-rise rental apartment tower. The owners at the time submitted applications for minor variances to allow them to sell these two properties to a home builder, the Downing Street Group, for the purpose of originally building ten high-density dwellings on the two sites. Three on the northeast side, identified as sixty Emmett Avenue, and seven units on the south of the Verona Link, known as Zero Verona. The neighborhood residents that opposed this high-density development raised over sixty formal objections, soon after the residents acquired the support of councillor Francis Nanziata and local provincial MPP Laura Albanaz, who also opposed the development because it did not conform to neighborhood standards. Councillor Nanziata then secured a City of Toronto lawyer, Mr. Ray Calio, or Calio, to represent the city and represent the residents to oppose the development. Four community meetings were held and well-attended between two thousand and ten and two thousand and thirteen, and a petition of a hundred and ninety residents' signatures were raised in opposition. The issues were raised to the City of Toronto Committee of Adjustments, and on September twenty-sixth, two thousand and thirteen, the committee returned a unanimous decision to reject the developer's application. And I have all the file numbers of that rejection here, if needed. Unfortunately, the issue was not resolved because the developer appealed to the OMB, Ontario Municipal Board, and after three years of presentations, the OMB overturned the decision of the Committee of Adjustments and granted approval with conditions on May seventh, two thousand twenty, sorry, two thousand and fourteen. The development of the reduced number of dwellings for only is currently under construction at Zero Verona Site. Early in the process, early two thousand and eleven, the residents proposed the building of two homes on the Zero Verona Site, which is currently under construction, rather than seven, with a different orientation, which would have been more closely conformed with neighborhood standards, but they would require two driveways entering the Verona Link. The City of Toronto planned and city engineers immediately and very firmly shut down any possibility of construction on the residential, residential driveways entering the Verona Link that we were talking about. We were told clearly to forget the idea and do not raise this driveway issue again. Driveways will not be permitted to enter the Verona Link under any condition. The city had conducted an independent traffic study, and the residents also performed two separate video studies during the morning and afternoon rush hour periods, and identifying exact numbers and types of traffic that transitioned the Verona Link and passed through the Verona Emmett intersection. The study identified higher-than-expected pedestrian traffic, passenger vehicles, trucks, TTC buses, TTC wheel-trans vehicles, and school buses. Note that one driveway from the apartments at fifty-five Emmett also directly, directly into this three-way intersection, making it a true four-way intersection. Again, numbers and videos can be available. This neighborhood is also home to West Park Healthcare Center. This special needs hospital is undergoing extensive replacement, construction, and enormous growth in recent years, and plans several more years of rapid growth and construction to include high-rise accommodations for seniors and those with mobility respiratory conditions. This increased patients, this increased patients and their associated visitors is likely, again, to double traffic access through Verona Link. We, the undersigned, oppose any variances that could permit driveways to be constructed.
Sir, you've got fifteen seconds?
We, the undersigned, are opposed to any variances that could permit driveways to be constructed directly accessing the Verona Link, with my family's signatures.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I guess we'll call back the, oh, are there any other speakers? In the room or at home now?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we'll call the agent back for an opportunity to rebut.
All right. I appreciate the records that are bringing to this question here, but again, we did what we could with the design to accommodate the two dwelling units. Without major impacts to the neighborhood. And also, once again, I'd like to reiterate that this committee decision was already, we had our approval in the past, and we are not fighting for anything new, we're just trying to reset the clock so we can keep working with our conditions that we need to meet. Already actually did a lot of work with engineering, forestry, and all the other departments, in the meantime, to, to keep going the development. And in terms of the driveway, there was a previously approved minor variance, so I, I don't see a problem on getting the go-ahead another time today.
Okay, you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, panel, for the agent? I'm sorry, I didn't give you an opportunity to question the gentleman that presented. Would anyone like to ask him anything, or? We're good?
Just one question. So your concern is that if this severance goes through,
Yeah.
you'll have two driveways which will generate cars, and you're concerned that Verona is busy, a very busy connection between the other two roads, and therefore would cause a hazardous situation to vehicles and pedestrians, is that?
That's part of it, yeah, absolutely, because that's.
Is there anything else?
The property itself, basically, would take up that entire road section, like that road is only what, a hundred and twenty feet or something?
Yeah.
Which is the length of the property, and, you know, they want to take a normal, a normal, normal residence and then flip it, so it's sideways now.
Yeah.
And, yeah, there's, it's just going to be a problem. And again, we were, we were told that that was not an option.
You're just answering his questions, you can't.
So, your concern is that there's too much traffic on Verona that the introduction of two driveways would cause some hazards. Why, why would people use them in a connecting road?
Why would they use it?
Yeah.
Um, schools. Children are going from Emmett Avenue, all the, all the apartment buildings, there's four buildings, there's two condominiums, two rental buildings, and they travel up, they walk along there, and they have, they walk along there up to Portage Trail, Yeah. which is maybe, maybe a kilometer away. So that, that access there, that, that link is heavily trafficked by pedestrians, in the morning, by children, in the morning and in the afternoon.
But how would the introduction of two more homes create additional hazard? It's only two homes you're putting in.
Right, but it's just a small space.
Small space.
It's a small space, it's a hundred and twenty feet.
Small link, right?
Small link, is, yeah, the link is very short.
There's only a sidewalk on one side of that.
That's correct.
Link.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I guess we'll go into committee for discussion and decision.
Chairman, I'm just referring to development engineering conditions of May the eighth. I'm just trying to recall what transportation services incorporated in that report, if you can. About, just for a moment, while I, while I pull that.
It says that a municipal sanitary sewer and water main are not available along the frontage on the lots of Verona. So they're going to have to have separate connections to the municipal systems. So they're asking for conditions related to that.
But as far. But as far as traffic is concerned, that was not an issue.
No.
Yeah. It's the service connections. And it does speak to, in the advisory comments, about the introduction of two additional driveways, but nothing related to not allowing them to go in. So the applicant must obtain necessary authorization permits from the city right-of-way management before excavating within or in towards the municipal road allowance. So they're not objecting to the new, the introduction of the two new driveways, is what I'm saying. In their view.
Just a quick question, did you reach out to the councillor again this time? You did not, so you don't know what her, her position is. I do remember this coming before us before.
I do too.
And I believe it was a row of townhouses?
No, it was three, three singles on the Link Street rather than two.
Okay.
Back in twenty twenty.
And actually, we thought it should be semi-detached.
They're not asking for any new variances, right? They just want an extension of the time to meet the conditions, is that?
No, there are two variance applications.
But they are the same as the ones that were approved, are they not?
They're similar. They're similar.
No, but. But we haven't got, uh, transportation backup on, on that. Not, not that it's not a valid concern, we're just pointing out it. Are there other aspects of, related to the consent, say the Lot size or configuration that is undesirable? And of course, on the variances. Is there anything, you know, the lot area is ju- just over half the minimum required? Is that a problem? Um.
How long is that?
I don't have the exact number, but maybe it's one-twenty? I mean, I'm sure it's on, on the map.
Yeah, it's basically.
Whatever the property is, is, is the length of the, the Verona link.
I'm just curious, what would you like to see built there? Yeah, sure.
The house hasn't been renovated and, uh, that I've ever seen it renovated, it either needs to be renovated, Um, they can do an addition on it, update it, that would be nice.
Okay.
Um, if they-
What about a semi-detached then?
A semi-detached would be fine by me, um, but it would, again, it would have to face The regular, original, uh, orientation of entering the property.
On Verona Avenue.
On, on the original Verona Avenue, not the Link.
Not the Link, I just thought I'd ask.
Yes.
Your time period, we wouldn't be here talking about it, right?
That's right. That's exactly what I was thinking.
Well, if you can't decide, I'm sufficiently concerned about the safety aspects of it for, um, The access issues in terms of students that may be, um, using that area, so for that reason, I would, um, I would refuse this application. Um.
Because it's not desirable for the community.
Exactly, because of the safety issues. I don't know if anyone's gonna second it, but I'll throw it out.
That's a catch-all for us sometimes.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, I'm, um, I mean, I've got a whole bunch of issues with this. Uh, unfortunately, One of my big issues does not fall under our, uh, jurisdiction, so. But I I, I, I just think this could be, this lot could be ca- I'm not Opposing development of this lot, I just think it could be configured better than it is. And, you know. So I, I don't think it's desirable for the community and a- as it's being presented to the committee and You know, if they wanna build it within the envelope, uh, and not come looking for variances, they're, they're welcome to do that, but They're looking for variances and I just can't approve them. So I'm gonna second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to refuse the consent and the two variance applications. All in favor? Okay, so those three applications are refused by a vote of four to one.
They need to come back with a better proposal.
Pardon?
They need to come back with a better proposal.
Yep. So is it now time for a long-awaited break?
Oh, yeah, it's one fifteen.
Okay, so, uh, we, we will now adjourn until, um, I guess, two fifteen. Then we have five more to go, to deal with.
Thank you.
Two fifteen, okay.
He's got everybody, oh, he's gotta recheck the sound. But they're gonna re, in spite of their redo? Okay, so then two fifteen.
So we'll say two fifteen.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. I don't think I'll, I'll be successful, though. At least I'll stay my peace. I'm surprised more people don't take these applications for seriously. Well, I, I, I enjoy hearing the history. I think that was a great context to give them.
They all moved out. And now it's sitting there, because of course, nothing to be done.
A lande assembly, they'd be worth what, when, I got it.
You didn't know that? Okay, let's go. Let's go. Um, some kid left their fire hat here.
Aww.
You know, I saw that earlier. That was the guy that came back and accosted me in the bathroom and I, for a second, I thought, what the hell is he doing back here? Is he following me into the bathroom?
Kid or daughter.
It was weird. And he was good-looking, too. He was wild.
I find this, uh, uh, the old days. No, it's, it's, like-
Were you writing response?
Yes, I think, most of our shit is forms, it's fingers, no arms.
Should be a big trial, yeah. Oh.
So, two connections, 'cause there's like six years of separation. Kate was, you know, a pedophile at, at Juana Public Library where that period of her life is well, well, had. So, life is full of, like, it was, I was a poor ass, I was just going in, going to vote, uh, to lose the schools. And then, the, the branch was right there, comes saying, so, you know, Eric Allen, that's the senior, uh, research shop, she's And then, the fourth thing, the city, obviously, that was called, wrote, that's all, four street, four. And, uh, she came in with her husband, and us, we all got hold of her. And, and for her, this is, uh, days, and she comes in and, and, uh, she bothers him Because Kate was very famous, and he was the man.
You're pregnant and all.
No, I'm, you're right, it's a big, real boy. Maybe, so, it was a very small team, because, uh, obviously. Many had shit on, that she was still here, quite normally, stay there. See. Was, uh, four parts, you know, two, I feel like, so, this is, uh, Two, two years, I'm pretty much, um, and I, uh, the worst, uh, don't Create, uh, somewhere, I was done with that. And I, I told him, I thought, so. It's been a while, it's been a while, it's been a while. Uh, you're seeing, so, I was, I was, I don't know, you know, you, you, you know, that were, you know, uh, Spo, brood, who's it so much fun, and they go there. This is. I. Shit. For me. Try. You know. I have. Change. Yeah. And four person. It's. Then. Around. Um. She um. So I saw this. I saw that. But maybe it's great. It's um. It's a. It's a great. So come on. I'll get to it. To move it. It's gay, I think, perfect. Of course, neither. It's.
No wonder you I all agree that anything.
It's. It's. Of course. I think that whole. So. We have the. Uh.
The.
So we have this. Three.
Is it how?
In Rock. Rockville. So we have. Rockville. It's a. Rock. Center. And um. All her. Of course. Uh successfully sued. See.
Well.
Usually. Is there um. Um, and there. So. It's forced. And then. Not just see it all. As part. There was that. See. But they're retired. These. But yeah. Um, and that's. Some. I do. All to this. Or. Have. This. It's a lot. There was a push on. Was falling. She threw. This. Three. It did happen. But. Um. Or the. But. Before you bring up that there's. She had. And then she passed out.
Oh.
Not. So happens to. It was. Once. After. It's. We're being tricky, uh. There's. Uh. Um. 具体. Where. Yeah. It's. And. I don't know. It was. 金包菜好 That's like. But. And then um. Oh yeah. Because. Your your. How. Now. And all of you. Or. Here.
嗯
But. So. Um. I agree. You. Of the choice.
Yeah.
And. On the basis that. So. Then. You won't be. I do. You.
是的 She was a. 老 It's just.
I'm.
咳
Sure.
Nazi.
Yeah. It's all these stories.
But Nazi.
嗯 It's. You have what? Well, right here. 你要什么好嗯 No. 你不要嗯你有你有
But it's for.
No, I like some of these. What's on the deep though?
That's a good one.
What is it? 那
Um, yeah, I don't know. But.
对这个 哦，是那个 我朋友拿是那个
Oh, is that what it is? I didn't read it. This is.
是的有 I don't know.
I gotta see before I read.
嗯那个其实都
There are.
嗯
I'm. It's the. The.
对
No.
你这个 so 是
No. That's the one that's.
哦我你
We're restarting at two thirty, is that it?
Two fifteen.
Two fifteen, oh, okay.
No.
Two. Maybe. This one. Oh. Those. Did you have any to cover? I need more.
Like.
Yeah. No. Is it my hero? Is she? Or the lady standing in the standing?
Something better though. He has it.
We're pulling my hero. Say. Even if. Look, I was wondering if it'd be nice.
Not a part.
Oh, it's good. Got.
I lost.
Good.
你
Actually, water is still still. I remember. Anyway, that was. No one was tired. For. She supplied. The. Gates. But she. She has.
Really? I don't know.
Perpetual.
哦
Per- perpetual. Per. Well, if you hire. If she supplies this. Or she's also fixing about. Start. First. And. Started at sixty. She. Sixty. It's really funny. By the sound. You said. For.
Well. I figure if you've seen it, that it's a. Take your. R S P rather than C P. It's once it's seven C P, you know, whether.
We know. That's the way.
Yeah.
To.
And um. But then you get. Still.
The the rule of thumb is. The country T F says it's.
You know, I know that.
Yeah. And then. R S P calls you have to. Fact, you're in. What you're bringing in. Versus what you could actually uh seven P one. Oh. Because you're forced to observe the cards. R S P is something. In the end, a party. There is a sort of a benefit. There is nothing. They're all bad.
嗯
So. Even if they want that to be here. There's still. You know, something. Not something. Better than nothing. So. Always said. The.
I don't know.
So. The. The for yellow.
Yeah.
Share. With the. There's. Burning. That. But so much. On these lines. Three. What difference in flavor of that first time? How's it ever?
嗯
If I retire. If you're compared to next year. It's. Four thousand dollars.
Well, right now, it's twelve million dollars. You got the. She will.
Yeah.
Then I would be getting sixty five thousand dollars.
We divide by five. That's. Good.
But.
Right.
Usually. It's up. Well, your bridge, so. It disappears.
No, that's not.
It's not.
That was.
But your bridge. But then. It's just.
The bridge? Yeah. The doctor. The doctor. The surgeon.
Yeah.
The. 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 The.
The guy who's. Tax is used to. The. Trooper. That's. Sort of. So when he retired. He got his bridge. And he's. So. It's.
嗯
So. He figures. Why not? No, we can't. Getting. He put it in the. Full yes. It's. Well, that's okay. But I'm good, but I'm getting on top of. Top of. So when I lose my bridge, I've already made my bridge with this. It's. I run. You get more if you. Go off.
But then speaking of the like obviously. So I'm gonna go. So. And then we do that.
Yeah.
Cause then you gather the possibilities.
Maybe you got one six percent for. Increase.
So we get eight percent.
Yes. Close sixteen. Then. Focus. For. Also, we have. Do you survive?
Yeah. Yeah.
See. This is.
No, there's a there's. There's a death.
Sorry, death.
Whatever. If you think.
Yeah. There is.
But that doesn't matter.
Oh, it's. It's a lot. On. I thought it was. That's. You. Retire.
Well, they say. When the first is private. Perhaps it was such a start, not safe. It was a step. Not safe.
It's.
At some point, it's just.
Yeah, but see, we're. We're. Point. We're seeing. Not per. But it's related to.
I think. This. We both thought.
Yeah. We're.
Then on the.
We're.
Yes. What I'm saying. It's. There you are.
I'm shocked. But. My mother. She gave us. Or she gets her. And she's got her. Up. Plus she is still. She. But. Do it. And. She's still saving. Like. The. But. Curse.
So good.
Doesn't like. Between. Or. The. Set.
The. One.
She's. She's. Or.
That's. It's not a.
No. I'm making a.
But also, when it's of the new Congress. Yeah. Yes, the. Of course. But also. Cause they said that what will be bad, they have to start.
What will be. On the street.
Yes. So that's what they say. So. They're watching about.
But that's why.
Yeah. They say because of the wage. I can't remember what they purpose from all of it. But. We need that. But we want the world to start. Just actually. So we say when the first is higher. But when you should. You know, if they're. You have to. It's like.
Of course.
Or. Or do. Problem. Or do. You want to do a recognition.
Our. Our. Um. We. Here. She. Pro. It's. Last time. I uh.
嗯
And our bills
But then but then she doesn't like monthly, she won't
She's the
I don't know. Listen, it's all business. And if I bring it up, it'll become high debt.
Yeah.
So
Oh, yeah.
So she gets that. And then yes, she knocks any of my people out of the house. But she's looking because I'm like
Oh.
the account like yeah, that's the ones that give the problem.
Yeah, well, it's
Sure. And then all of a sudden I'm like, oh, why is it twenty one thousand versus sixty?
And she got her mother-in-law, it's she and and we keep like we can tell records of who buy who, parents put it there.
And she um
Was it all
She complains already. She is
She did. I don't know.
She played the but we don't
Well, then also you're
Because I'm getting all doing all that
So you're own supplementing her lifestyle?
My mom I understand my mom, I think some different money. Yeah. But my aunt would be that kind of going you know, like but my my and I think that's it's and then when my mom felt post if you let sort of you know, it's such a so like up against that you don't think and she gets her
Did you change anything whether oh, we are instead of her?
No, they're worried of her life.
Did you?
And my aunt would be worried that my mom get on her and all that. But just that they sleep, they don't think
She's easy.
And it's her so work for a while. And I'm like and I
Oh.
But it's
Oh.
And I don't think that's about to my side, but it is, but we're the ones that
Yeah.
She saved her soft like three thousand dollars. But she was in with their car. You could have sold it.
You really?
But yes.
Or the
But the point is it's and she got how it felt
But she has no the position
And
So
I'm worried about I'm worried about how she that she had she's
Yeah.
And so the whole knowledge of this but she's yeah. We expect in the harvest.
It's So we begin
But I got she has she's or actually the other mom.
Yeah.
No, but picture someone's you don't but it's not only
But it's
And it's hard to be something.
Yeah. And just
because even the president we all we're looking at something
So I get about I love the because it's this is so far um she got I get I would say she's still
It's not
This is why do you know also she's helped obviously. And I both his parents also since and and if you tell one person I'm not gonna prove it to be the same because if you
Yeah, but pictures
My mother-in-law says stops
Nothing.
Yeah. It's a and it all had to do with important um my brother my father insisted um where my little and and I the screw is over per uh per for that's um it's what doesn't mean doesn't I never that's the biggest thing that breaks the law. So a lot of this my little brother and my father there's somebody I have so It's a it's yeah. So I I don't think it's going yeah, but it's maybe it's just a bird. But um I see it all some in all poor areas to own and then and how does that excuse always
Well, um
So so I don't I don't wanna wear anymore. And it's from part of your she deal motion rooms and something similar. It's cool and you have good as so it's a page and I'm gonna relax did but it will be and there are two places, but we have perfectly supposed to be on top. And we're twenty minutes away from the my mom's place. That's we know that like good food good wine, good beer. It's you know. And you have what I've experienced so much, we here or if we're a time all it's right. It's affordable.
Yes.
All
Now the whole ceremony
I
but it's not cool like so I would be
Yeah. I but I'm a I'm a
No, the only reason I say I remember my YouTube but it's hard for you if you want to do
Not good.
It's not like I can go to the
Joey oh, I had a fire man.
Firework.
Not not mine. What'd you get?
I got a like steak. Some cocktail. And one more chip.
No. Well, a brick.
Yeah.
Why you do that?
It's
It's something to scratch.
How do I scratch?
You scratch the bricks.
I don't have I don't have nails this way.
Scratch the bricks.
I don't have nails this way.
How would you sit there?
Oh, by the way, you were right about exactly be exactly the plan, the way you put it out there. I was
Freaked off real quick.
He took the money and you ran.
I don't blame him.
Wow.
Take the money, twenty six million a year, sets his family up for generations. Comes back in a year or two, goes to U Bay.
U Bay is kidding. Is it an electrician?
No, they're keeping their old books from Russia.
On what?
Electricity's on all the way now.
Oh, that's rude. Sorry.
My god.
Well, can you track it?
No, probably they used to because it's just gotten so ridiculous.
Why don't you suggest
I'd love to. See, I thought that would probably take you the we didn't put in the marble
Well, there's a
Well, we didn't see the
I didn't
Oh, okay. Uh, sponsors, coffee. Uh, I was
But it's
No.
So it's
Who's saving this? I don't know. Is that you're
Yeah.
Oh. I'm just up the A P press What's the A P for? How would bullshit? But it's understandable you would think Okay, so I'm thinking the meat would be delicious.
For what?
For her uh for her stay parallel to the old
But it's gonna be all
Why?
What happened next?
Let's do it for perfect. What was stupid?
We're gonna have we booked up the park for
Uh.
I always well, I like them. But I always
I don't
we'll see. So the one can stop see dog. No, I'm yeah.
I She's not this polite.
We know what we're doing. This is my brother Jim.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, yeah.
Good uh both travel brothers?
Both my brothers and I I we're all he speaks but he worked he worked in the States, just like I worked worked in the States. We're doing a tour. We started in Topol, we're doing all hundred libraries, public libraries.
All right.
Were we up to a hundred guys?
A hundred. Uh, they didn't set
Yeah, but one
The one that's our next we're doing the uh we're almost up a binder and we got three letter codes for each of the libraries, getting lots of trivia, talking to all to libraries stock
And do you
We have some some parts of crafts that could be
But they got together
You can't even in a topical civics and a tour, they'll get the maps in the back.
The maps in the back.
Sure.
Sure. I don't even know that. And I'm a map person. And I'm a map person.
Are you personally?
Oh.
Same thing I did the other time.
Yeah, Linda, I know what to tell you.
You also.
She's very good.
So, I'm working with the new civic center for all of the. That was probably.
Well, clean the, the, the body part, like, um, like, see if, uh.
Oh, she's, she's.
Well, you remember we'll be there.
God, let's tell them, I think, why she came up.
Yeah, I think it's involved on that, but it's obviously, yes.
She's.
Here, it's, it's like, there. Several or four, but I think it's instead of, kind of, I think.
So, there's not a, a factor to it, you know, which came just down to.
I thought that we're saying, exactly, I've been saying, that's the population.
Part of the, and then they tell us.
I think that, that, that's what we're, we're, they can say it, it's, but, like, John, like, Donald, it's, 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 and, uh, and just a, really, uh, and, and it's more, yeah, I'm sure it's gonna be tough.
I mean.
So, if I have a talking report, that's gonna. Yeah, so, part of, well, there's a new project that actually says that we can't turn around.
She had a, like, I, she's, she's, she's starting inviting her things. I did say, I said, can I say?
But, you know, like, people who track, I mean, it's pretty, it's.
She, you know, you know. Eighteen, but, 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 so, we're, we're, it's a lot of issues, like, yeah.
It was very serious to see what, for.
I mean, it's a good issue, so. So, what you're, uh, I'm, I'm, uh, still working on, on some regulation. Do you, I, I got a couple of, well, I mean, you have a bank that, uh, I, I had, uh, so I had some, uh, a lot of.
Yeah, that's easy to do.
Can we do it?
We, 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 we. We were together.
Then you know what, she looks.
How, how much longer do you have? Oh, my god. And when it's time, I mean, as, as, of course, anyone, everyone's, uh, who thinks, how the difference, like, morning, which, I wasn't sure, which was gonna do that.
I thought there was some, um, um, you came to sing.
Yeah, it's, uh, I'll start with our, uh, yeah. Yeah, I don't know, it's a strong.
We need to check, I mean, I'm, I'm.
That's right.
That's everybody.
Yeah, and Linda's still that way, even as grounded as Linda is, she's still, every story has, you know, somebody that, you know.
Um, you know when you buy that whole company and stuff like that, they often wrap them in that. I just bought a new quilt.
Well, I wanted a red.
And that's, oh.
I wanted a red one to read on this.
What's color time?
What color time?
No, just my highlighter.
Ah.
So I can see it.
Oh.
Red white and blue is the type of light that we need. Red white for blue. These were neutral colors.
It's red, baby.
Two fifty.
Doctor.
Who's on me?
Nine, no, medical side three nine. Follow.
I'm so tired of having coffee.
Better.
I should put the lid on the inside of your car.
I don't wear the shirt.
Or like, there's a light on the back of the.
There's a light on the back.
Yep.
Very sure.
You can start with. Oh, no, it's not. We can go. Look for.
Let's start with. Patrick.
Okay, thank you for, whoops. Small smidny cover. Thank you for allowing us some break time. We will now resume with item number seventeen, ten eighty-three Royal York Road. The purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are three variances. This application was deferred in October, on October tenth last year, to provide an opportunity to consult with planning and transportation. And currently, we have transportation review is okay, community planning is okay, we have a metro links advisory. Two opposition letters. Are there any speakers in the room on number seventeen?
No.
And anybody at home?
No, there was someone that came to speak, but they left, they wrote a, I think they have a letter on file.
Okay. And the agent is Nicole Parr.
Mister Chair, my name is Nicole Parr, twenty-two Blue Forest Drive, Toronto, Ontario, M three H four W two, and I'm the agent for this file.
Okay, thank you. I wonder, is, your application's pretty straightforward, have you read the two opposition letters that have been submitted on this application?
For you, Mister Chair, yes, I did read the letters, and I will note that one of them was before, when we had the driveway configuration facing onto Royal York. We have since changed the driveway configuration to be on Usher Avenue, so I believe that objection doesn't really stand anymore, unless, of course, the neighbor had anything else to say. And I believe the other neighbor is concerned about their daylight and privacy, but we are adhering to the side yard setbacks, and I will note, we have no side yard variance. So we are being respectful there, and we work very closely with planning to reduce the size, worked with transportation, and I do believe that this new proposal meet the four tests of the planning act.
Okay, great, thanks. Panel, any questions for Ms. Parr? No. Okay, um, let's go into committee then and make a decision.
Chairman, I'm prepared to speak on the side, and there are three variances before us, the variances are indeed minor, appropriate for the development of the site, meet the four tests, the going of approval, subject urban for urban forestry condition one.
Thank you, Mister Gully, is there a second or from Mister Gully's motion?
I can second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Olerson, all in favor? That is, um, we'll call that four to one with an abstention.
It'll be unanimous, because we'll mark Mister Ross as absent. Yep.
Moving on to item eighteen, sixty-six North Queen Street. Purpose is to legalize and to maintain the convenience store and gas station.
Mister Ross, can you turn on your video?
Five variances. This application was deferred on February twentieth this year to provide an opportunity to consult with planning. We have currently filed on this matter is a okay from transportation review and nothing from planning. So. We don't have anyone in the room to speak to this one, or at home, I don't think.
That's correct, Mister Chair.
Good, okay. So panel, does anyone need a presentation on this, or should we? Ask the agent if he's okay with answering questions? Is it okay, we'll do that approach, okay? Mister Mack?
Hello, good afternoon.
Hi, could you just give us your name and address?
Of course, it's Edward Mack, M A K, address is ninety, ninety-two twelve Young Street in Richmond Hill.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the panel was just discussing this matter, and we feel it's simple, clear, straightforward, don't think we need a presentation from you, but if you're okay, we'll just, um. If we have any questions, we'll ask you those questions, and otherwise, we might just jump into a decision on this.
Sure.
Would you be okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, then panel, any questions for Mister Mack? No one? Ready for a decision then?
Chair, I'm prepared to speak on this item as well, convenience store and a gas station being proposed at sixty-six North Queen Street, this is a fairly industrial employment area. We have a report for development engineering, which includes comments from transportation, they're okay with the development, I believe the five variances that are being requested are appropriate, move approval, with no condi, no conditions.
Thank you, Mister Gully, and a second or from Mister Gully's motion, Ms. Riddick, thank you very much, all in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mister Mack. Moving on to number nineteen. Thirty-four Blair Athol Crescent. This matter was deferred on March twentieth of this year for an opportunity to revise the variances and provide proper notice. The purpose. Purpose of the application is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage and a pool in the rear yard. There are ten variances. We have a community planning condition, transportation review conditions. One opposition letter from number sixteen. And four support letters from numbers thirty-one, thirty-six, thirty-nine, and forty-three. The agent is Marco Razolini.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the committee, my name is Marco Razolini from Sakura Design, twenty Stave Bank Road, Unit two oh two, Mississauga.
Okay, just before your presentation, I just want to check in here, so we have a Gina Scarsella. Registered to speak, that's you? Okay. So Mister Razolini, we do have Ms. Scarsella in the room to speak to this, so I think a presentation from you on your project would be in order.
Sure, I did submit a presentation visual document earlier, if we could bring that up.
Yeah, just give us a second to pull that up, Mister Chair. Okay, it should be up, when you're ready, I'll start the time.
Just tell us where you want to go, Mister Razolini.
Uh, yes, sure, I'll get into it now, so, the site is located on an interior bend of Blair Athol Crescent. The unique lot shape does intensify some of the variances that we're proposing, I'll speak to these shortly. Blair Athol, as well as the surrounding streets on Prince George, Pottery and Abilene, are evolving from the original mid-century built bungalows to new two-story, modern build similar to this application. On the next slide, excuse me. We've noted some of the houses that have already transitioned, these are from Google Street View from twenty twenty-two, so a lot of these are built now, and there's a few others that have been built in the neighborhood. Uh, if we can go to the next slide. So this shows the existing site condition, you can see that even with the original build, the site is quite unique from the existing lots in the neighborhood. And even from the original, original time that the subdivision was built, they were sort of trying to work with the awkward shape of the lot. We could go to the next slide. So this is a visual outlining how the setbacks are taken, the green line is the front yard setback, it starts at the bottom left and then curves up, starts midway, stops midway through the bend. And then transitions to the exterior side lot setback, which is in pink, which carries to the back of the lot. We could go to the next slide. So this is a zoom in on an area where a lot of the setback variances are coming from. The green shaded areas are the portion of the house that are over the front yard setback, the pink shaded area is the portion of the house that's over the exterior side yard setback. The blue area is the porch encro, encroachment, and the orange areas are the architectural feature encroachments. We can go to the next slide. Um, this visual shows other FSI's that have been approved in the neighborhood. The green items highlighted on the spreadsheet, as well as on the map, are approvals that have taken place on Blair Athol itself. You can see twenty-one, eighteen, twenty-seven, and nineteen have all been approved with higher FSI's than what we're proposing today. Uh, if we could go to the next slide. The next set of visuals, I, I won't speak to them specifically, but these outline the height variance, this is the front elevation, the blue line going across is the maximum height. The small portion of the roof there is the increase that we're asking for today, the next slide shows the side elevation. And then the following two slides, we've provided the, we've provided exterior three D renders of the house, we could go to the next one. So I think what's important to note about the application as a whole, regardless if we're looking at FSI or the building height, is there's a lot of articulation and architecture that we're, we've put into this, it's not just a two-story chateau house, wall over wall, that's going to have a, a large imposing massing, we really feel like, because, well, we're accomplishing two things, because we're in such a visible part of the neighborhood, being on the bend. We felt that having some articulation is going to be a little bit nicer to look at than just a two-story wall over wall house, but also, you know, by looking more architectural, we feel ha, by providing a better appearance, we feel it also has a reduced massing impact on the neighborhood. And then if we could go to the next slide, this just outlines other height variances that have been approved. Nineteen Blair Athol is an example that the committee has approved with a higher height, as well as a hi, higher FSI. And that house is an example of a house that's just wall over wall, very simple massing, where we've tried to add in a lot of articulation to the exterior design. I'll leave it at that, I'm happy to address any concerns from the neighbors, or, excuse me, answer any questions from the committee.
Okay, thank you, Mister Razolini. Panel, any questions or comments before we invite Ms. Scarsella?
Just one comment to the presenter. Indeed, even though it's not within our purview, architecturally, it fits beautiful, beautifully into that bend on the street. And I just wanted to allude to the fact, and you probably know, that planning has recommended a condition regarding the side plan, and you're aware of that, right, and you're prepared to abide by it?
Yes, we are aware.
Thank you.
Anything else, panel? So Ms. Scarsella? You just give us your name and address at the beginning, thanks.
Gina Scarsella, sixteen Blair Athol Crescent, Etobicoke. I, um, obviously live on the same street, I'm down the street from the house in question, and on the same side. And my objection, and I will add as an aside, I don't know if the letter of objection was withdrawn, but there was a second letter of objection that I read and that I'm aware of. As I say, I don't know if it's been withdrawn, but that should be noted. I have two major issues with this application. The house is too large, and intertwined with that, and perhaps most importantly, is that the size of the house, the height of the house, and where it's going to stand on the lot, if I understood it correctly, these, these are not easy for laypeople to read, is going to obstruct the line of sight for drivers and pedestrians, and that, for me, is a safety concern. So, I've, I've submitted a letter, and I'm not going to repeat it or read it to you, but I will just spend a moment on the too large, and it, it really isn't very different from what was said. I don't know if it was a question from one of the members, or, or a comment, but when there was the presentation on the duplex earlier this morning, I think a comment was made, this is just too large for the lot. That's my submission with this house, they're trying to do too many things, they have expanded the size of the dwelling. When you look at the covered porches, the back porches, the patio tiling, the planters that are going all around the house, what we're going to see is this monolithic structure with very little green. Blair Athol is a beautiful street in the manner, it is characterized by large lots, by greenery, by trees, which are unfortunately slowly disappearing. But this house will be an outlier. I believe, if I understood it correctly. And in terms of the transformation of the neighborhood, which the applicant's agent speaks to and a lot of other applicants speak to, it is transforming, and there are large two-story homes, and I'm not objecting, I have to accept that there are large two-story lovely homes. But of the new builds, at least from a visual and from the plans that I have read as they've been coming through, most of them, actually all of them, more or less align in the front. None of them are sticking out. There are some variances, but they align, there's green grass, there's green landscapes, they've maintained trees where possible, planted new trees. This house, if I look at the site plan that was up earlier, and I note that the transportation, not the transportation, the planning department noted that on the south side, it is only the, the first story that is coming out, but it is a huge, in my, in my view, it is a huge variance that is being requested. It, I'm a, I'm not a metric person, in feet, from the corner of the house to the property line, it's, it's over eight feet. And if you look at it from this planter, which I don't know what it is, other than it looks like a cement wall that's going to go around and they're going to put plants in it, that's only two point four, two, two feet four inches away from the property line. And remember that Blair Athol has no sidewalks on either side, they are culverts. And when you consider, and this is my, I come to my intermingled concern, when you consider the height, and albeit, it may only be the first floor, but that's the floor that's going to dominate, and that's the floor that's going to hide cars coming around. If you look at it, it is a sharp curve, it is almost a ninety-degree angle, you have to really be careful as you're coming around, with no sidewalks, kids playing, and lots of people on that street, walking their dogs and taking walks. I'm, I'm afraid that that's a hazard. And when you look at the combination of all that, um, that's, that's where I am most.
Ms. Scarsella, you've got twenty seconds.
Yes, I see that.
Thank you.
Um. There was a transportation report, I do not see any mention of any issue of the line of sight. And that worries me, and if there's an answer to that, I, I would certainly like to have it, and it would make me feel better, otherwise, the application should, should be denied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Pam, any questions of Ms. Scarsella, comments?
Sorry.
That's okay. No, we're good? Okay.
Uh, from what you said, is it the design or the size that you're most concerned?
Size. And where it sits, I don't know what you mean by design, where it sits on the lot.
Okay, Mister Ross?
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Scarsella. Invite Mister Razolini back to rebut what he has learned from Ms. Scarsella.
Sure, could we go back to one of the visuals from my presentation, it would have been slide number five? If we could bring that up, I also wanted to. Okay, so, I'll speak to a few things, because, well, a few things were brought up here. The question about sightlines and transportation and the house proximity to the corner, I think this visual, as well as the site plan, doesn't give the site enough justice to understand where the house truly sits, and I think this is maybe where people often get confused when reviewing site plans, even for our clients that we work with, we, we explain this when we're, when we're speaking with them the first time, the property line, which is that dark black dash dot line, is the property line, the street is actually twenty feet beyond that, right, so from that corner, we are asking for a side yard setback variance, the planter isn't, is a permitted encroachment, that's an aside, but from that corner to the street edge is actually, I was just looking at my CAD software here, is about forty feet. Yeah, is, is actually just over forty feet, and then, so we're, we're only asking to remove two feet approximately from that forty-foot distance, so we would have forty-two, we're asking for forty-two to the street edge. Transportation didn't raise any concerns about sightlines, it is a very a unique property, I think, you, you know, it was even mentioned, it's an outlier, the site is an outlier in the neighborhood, and I think that also makes the house feel larger, most houses that you're driving by in the neighborhood, you're going to only see the shortest side of the house, right, if it's a sixty-foot frontage or a seventy-foot frontage, you're going to be seeing the fifty feet wide of the house, including setbacks. You're not seeing the additional fifty to seventy feet depth that the house actually is. Our house, regardless if we're going to committee of or not, I think it's going to always feel larger than most houses in the neighborhood, because we're seeing two elevations along the south and west side. We've put a lot of effort to make sure that the house doesn't feel so imposing, even given the fact that we're going to be seeing more of the elevations than we typically would. It also means a higher expense for our client, because we're going to have two elevations that we need to treat really well, well, three if we include the back, we're a typical house, they dress up the front, they don't do much to the sides. So there's, there's a lot of effort that we're doing that most people wouldn't have to deal with. And I think that all adds to the house maybe feeling a little bit bigger than it is, I, I presented the FSI precedent in the neighborhood, and we're actually in the middle range of what's been approved, there's been a lot of approvals on Blair Athol that are higher than what we're asking for, and again, I think it's just the two elevations that are maybe playing into how big the house feels. Yeah, we're not asking for a coverage variance, the other thing that was mentioned was the porch sizes, we, we conformed to coverage, we made, we went back, well, working with planning before the first submission, to reduce the covered porch sizes to ensure that we were conforming with coverage. Yeah, I think, I think that was most of what, what I could provide on that, but happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Mister Razolini, panel, any questions for Mister Razolini, comments?
So you're, you're designed to, going to account the corner house aspect, for the two elevations being visible?
I'm sorry? Y- yes, for sure, if you go down to the second last page in this, right, there, there was the render that shows that corner. So we're, we're proposing, all of the one-story massing is positioned on the si, on the sides that are exposed to the street. So if we could, if you go down to that visual, you'll see at the corner where the office is, it's a one-story with a gable roof, the back corner as well is a one and a half story with a gable roof. There's a chimney on that side, there, there's a lot of work being done on that side that typically you wouldn't do on a standard rectangular lot.
Okay, so can we now go into committee for discussion and decision?
Uh, Chair, I just wanted to make a couple of comments for, for my colleagues, and I think that Ms. Scarsella made an excellent presentation with respect to her concerns regarding the size with the massing of the house, and also with respect to the issue of being on a corner and sightlines around the corner, those are the type of concerns that certainly are very valid. Um, I, I feel though, that as far as the size is concerned, we're going from zero point four five to zero point five two, I think that house fits on that side. I think the other point that was made by the applicant was that, or the applicant's agent, is that the coverage is not an issue. I believe the fact that it's exposed on two sides is indeed part of the visual aspect of impact, and furthermore, uh, the curve on the road is such that, uh, it allows for good sidelines in both directions. Transportation services did not make any comments on that, they did not express a, a concern. I know that when you're right on the street, you believe that it's going to be very difficult, but when you look at the public road allowance, the line where the public road allowance is, and the setback of the building from the street line, not the pavement line, the street line, it's very generous, so I don't feel, I agree with staff that sa, safety of sidelines is not an issue, I think the arc, the arc is very, very generous. Um, so, in terms of size, again, uh, from zero point four five to zero point five two for this area is not excessive, height is not an issue, I don't believe it's an issue, what's being requested is nominal. Uh, as far as safety is concerned, which Ms. Scarsella raised, very important issue, but I believe that that issue was addressed by transportation, I believe that it's correct also, that sidelines are not compromised.
Any? Anything in contrary to Mister Gully, or should I invite him to tack on a sentence and, as a motion?
I think you can make a motion, I don't have any question.
Mister Gully, may, may I, I ask you to, you don't have to repeat yourself, just, just make a motion.
So Chair, I, I, I did listen to the applicant, and I read a very eloquent and very comprehensive correspondence, and, and a very good presentation too, and you raise issues that are very important, particularly for, for a board like this to consider. Um, having a new building in that corner, even an entry to that neighborhood is so important, but I think, and this is not within our purview, Chair, but I think that architecture. But I think, and this is not within our purview, Chair, but I think that architecturally, it was designed in such a way that there are, there is a lot of articulation, and also architectural elements that tries to reduce the massing of the house. Specifically with respect to things that are within our purview, FSI, I believe, is appropriate. A house of four-hundred-and-forty-nine square meter, I think on that site, is, is good, it's good planning with respect to issues of setback. I think planning is addressing that issue to ensure that they don't do anything over and above what's being shown on the plans. Urban Forestry has requested condition number two, which I believe is appropriate. Development Engineering has submitted a report with conditions as well, in a report of June the fifth. Transportation in that report doesn't address any, any, any issues related to that. And Planning submitted that report on, on May sixteen, also outlining what their conditions are to ensure that the house is actually constructed in the manner that's before today. So on that basis, Chair, I believe that the four tests are being met. I'm gonna move approval subject to Planning Report of May the sixteenth regarding the site plan, that the, it only applies to the covered porch setback, Development Engineering comments of June the fifth, and Urban Forestry Condition Two. With those three conditions, Chair, I move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a second here for Mr. Gully's motion? Thank you, Mr. Ross, all in favor? That's approved unanimously, thank you all.
Thank you, have a good afternoon.
Thank you, you too. Moving on to item twenty, thirty-three Hill Garden Road. Purpose is to construct a one-story front, or one-story front and rear additions and a new covered front porch. There are five variances. Urban Forestry has requested the condition one, and this matter was deferred on March twentieth this year to provide an opportunity to make revisions to the plans and consult with Planning. The agent is Endo Lachessano. I don't believe we have anyone in the room or at home to speak to this one. Panel, shall I ask Enzo if he's agreeable to foregoing a presentation on this one? Okay. Mr. Lachessano?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Hi.
Committee members.
And your address?
It's one-two-four-five Caledonia Road in Toronto, M-six-A, two-X-six.
Okay, we, Mr. Lachessano, we, we find your application to be pretty clear and straightforward. We're wondering if you'd be agreeable to foregoing a presentation to us? And in lieu, answering any questions if we have any?
Uh, sure.
Okay, let's do that then. So panel, questions or comments for Mr. Lachessano?
This is back because you've revised the plan, correct?
That's correct, we worked with Planning. We were able to delete one of the variances, which was the length. We reduced the coverage, and we've also reduced the rear yard setback.
Okay, so you've answered my question not yet asked, what changes did you make, so thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, then let's go into committee and make a decision.
Yeah, I'd be pleased to make a motion for thirty-three Hill Garden Road to approve the application, and I do not believe there are any conditions.
Yeah, Urban Forestry.
Forest, I'm sorry, Forest, F-one.
Seconder for Mr. Ross's motion? Thank you, Ms. Ross, all in favor? That is unanimously approved. Final item of the day is item twenty-one, six-ninety-seven Brown's Line. Purpose is to construct a one-story rear addition, a second-story addition above the existing dwelling, and a new rear deck. There are ten variances. We have Transportation Review has requested two conditions. That's the only agency item we have on file. I guess, I guess in light of the fact that we have ten variances, and a person wishes to speak, Chuki Lamo, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Let's ask Ms. Catherine Harrison for a brief presentation. Ms. Harrison?
Kate Harrison? Kate, you're unmuted now.
Can the committee hear me now?
Yep.
Excellent, thank you, I apologize for that. Hello, committee, my name is Kate Harrison. I am the architect and agent for six-nine-seven Brown's Line. My office is located at seventy-eight DeForest Road in Toronto. I'm happy to provide a small presentation. I provided a cover letter to the committee. Would it be possible to have that brought up? Thank you very much. I appreciate that there are an exceptionally large number of variances for this particular application. We are trying our best to meet existing conditions. The, the crux of the application is a small seventy-six square foot addition off the back that is just on the main floor. It meets the existing side yard setback and the existing rear yard setback. The second-floor addition is at the front, and it is meeting all of the setbacks that are already there except for the front. The existing house has a very interesting cantilever canopy at the front that is over four feet long. We're gonna cut back three feet from that, but then use it to extend the second-floor addition slightly to the front. So the way that the Atobaco Bylaw calculates FSI is it includes the basement. So it pushes our FSI count up higher than the allowable. If we were to only consider the amount of square footage that is on the main floor and the second floor, we would be within the point-four-five. However, it is calculated differently according to the Atobaco Bylaw. Our maximum height, next page please. The maximum height allowable is seven-point-five meters. This is again according to former Atobaco Bylaw. We are matching the existing height, which is seven-point-five-three, which is one inch of difference. It's fairly minor, but we can achieve seven-point-five easily. Front yard setback, that is being slightly modified, again by that cantilever that we are trying to take advantage of in order to provide ever so slightly more. The difference is approximately nine inches worth of difference, and is to provide ever so slightly better bedroom widths on the second floor for the new kids' bedrooms that will be up there. Some of the next ones are in regards to front yard landscaping. So two of the requirements that are there kind of are intertwined. Fifty percent of the front yard must be soft landscaping, and then, or it might, must be landscaping, and then seventy-five percent of that must be soft landscaping. So this is an existing condition, and if you wouldn't mind going to the next page, page three, you will see some images, and I, of, these are of the adjacent houses, the, one to the north and some to the south, and this is what their front yards look like. So this is off of Brown's Line. Brown's Line is an incredibly busy, major arterial road, and people need to park in the front yards, and this is, this is what they look like across the board. So the existing house, as seen on page four of my document, is very similar to this, and actually, we have some trees compared to the neighbors. So these are all existing conditions that we wish to maintain, and we are not proposing to change any of it in terms of the landscaping. For, next page please, page five, for the minimum rear yard setback. Again, we are simply matching the existing rear yard setback and the side yard setback to the north. And that's what page six says, side yard setback to the north. We are just matching that as well, and this, the, the rear addition is just on, on the main floor. And then, page number seven has the platform, which is the rear deck that we're proposing. So the rear deck is protruding a little bit further towards the, the rear yard setback than the bylaw allows, by approximately twenty-one inches. And we are, the existing backyard is already fully landscaped with hard landscaping. So by doing this deck, we don't feel that we would be taking away any of the hard lands, or any sort of soft landscaping. So we would request a slightly deeper deck to allow for these two points of egress to come out onto the deck. And again, page eight of the document shows the existing condition. And there's just a note there that there's this tree in the background that actually doesn't exist anymore because it fell over in twenty-twenty-three, but that's sort of the age.
Ms. Harrison, you have, you have ten seconds to wrap up?
And the last one is driveway width, and we are just maintaining existing, the way that the bylaw calculates it, because it includes the existing parking that's in the front, so anything that was asphalt got included in the driveway width. We feel that this is in keeping with all the existing houses that are there, and we would kindly request approval of our application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Panel, any questions or comments for Ms. Harrison? Okay, so we'll invite our registered participant, Chuki Lamo? Chuki Lamo, are you available?
Yes, I am, I'm here, yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
Could you just repeat your name and give us your address?
My name is Chuki Lamo, I live at seven-oh-three Brown's Line, next to six-ninety-seven Brown's Line.
Okay.
So I'm just, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you go ahead and speak to us.
I'm just a little concerned about the sunlight, you know? Not coming from, with the addition of the second, uh, this one, sorry, um, the second-story addition at the front? Yeah. That's it, I think, I don't, yeah. Because we have already, like, our windows are very small, and we don't get much light. So I don't know, with, with the addition from the second story, I'm just concerned, you know, we might get even less sunlight.
Okay, are you finished?
Yes, I'm done, yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Harrison, could you come up and do your rebuttal, please?
Oh, well, I'd like to thank the neighbor for their concerns. If you could please go back to page five of my cover letter, or the site plan's perfect, actually, I see that you have the site plan up. The site plan shows that, so number seven-oh-three is the direct neighbor to the north, even though the numbers jump on. And the existing house is set quite far back on the south, and it will be over the existing footprint. And so if the concern is to have less kind of south light, we are set back further on the lot than seven-oh-three. So if it's a matter of getting south or westerly light, that shouldn't be a concern. And the existing house is seven-point-five meters, we're asking for seven-point-five-three, which is a one-inch difference, so I don't feel that that would adversely affect their sunlight, but I do appreciate the comments.
Okay, thank you. Panel, any final questions for Ms. Harrison?
Just one question on Development Engineering Report of June the fourth regarding the two conditions. You're okay with those two conditions, you understood, I think staff understands the fact that the curb cut of sixteen meters, I don't remember exactly what it was, sixteen point something, really relates to a rolled curb right on Brown's Line, because it's so wide. But you're, you're okay with the conditions, the two conditions that Development Engineering is requesting, right?
Yes, and actually, I, I would like to address that, simply because they are requesting a condition about, a condition that already exists and not on the property. So I've been going back and forth with transportation. And if you go to page three of my application, and it's perfect to see what's happening at the neighbors' houses. So if you see these, like, rolled curbs that they call it, these rolled curbs with the stamped concrete where the people's garbages are right now in those photographs, that is what the issue is. And so they have requested that these flared curbs be made smaller. And so that is something that we have to work out with transportation and how they would like us to do that as part of the approval, and it's on city property, so I'm not quite sure how we're going to do that, but we are pleased to work with transportation, so that's, we'll, we'll figure that out, I guess.
Yeah, I think so, because the, the wording they use does, does indeed allow for conversations between you and them. And I don't think the sub-conditions are that onerous, I think they're workable.
Fantastic, we are happy to work with transportation, they've been very easy to work with so far.
Okay, I guess we're ready to go into committee and make a decision.
Chair, I'm prepared to speak on the side, I'm, I'm very familiar with the section of Brown's Line. I've done a lot of work on it in my previous career in transportation. I think what's being proposed right on, on the road is is a project that does fit, fit in. I would have liked to see something much bigger, but what's being proposed is good. I think the variances that are being requested are appropriate, they meet the test. So I'm gonna move approval subject to Development Engineering conditions in the report dated June the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. Gully, is there a second?
Mr. Chair, can we just pause, because Laura's...
I've lost my connection, so rather than trying to sign in again, we just don't, we can move, refrain from doing.
Unless you wanna cuddle with a member, and then we can see what you do, but...
Yeah, you may as well second. All righty, all in favor? That is a unanimous approval.
Oh yeah, my favorite.
Thank you, participants, thank you, staff, we now... I'll, I'll give the time, you just say you want to adjourn. We are adjourned at three-oh-five PM this Thursday, June nineteenth.
Thank you.
Good night and good luck.